Mr. Gonzalez, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rene Rodriguez, Saxon, Cisnero, Nevada?
Here.
Ralph Turan?
Here.
Mayor Elia Garcia?
Here.
Victor Perez?
Here.
And Ivan Colombiello?
Here.
Mayor, we have a call. Item number four, public comment? Miriam Cruz? No, you're not. Ms. Cruz, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. I have a couple of things. The first, lots of speeding still going on in Stockyard, lots more cops. But, you know, there'll be a cop just pulled someone over and you got three cars. So I'm not sure that law enforcement's gonna be our long-term answer. So, I just thought I'd come and mention that again. For, what, a little over two years now about the speeding going on in Stockyard. Second thing is, that new development, I believe it's called Cielo del Rio? Mr. Terraza's maybe? I don't know what it's... I believe construction's done. I have pictures here of these eighteen-wheelers now parking on a house driveway. So, we had, well, the city had removed, no eighteen-wheelers allowed to pass because of all the construction that was happening. Construction's done. I think those signs can go up now. Even though there's some construction happening outside of the city limits in the ETJ, they can come in and out through the gateway. There's no need for them to be coming through Socorro anymore. There's a lot of eighteen-wheelers coming in and out. There's a lot of them speeding through there and they're leaving a lot of debris. There was a piece of metal that almost hit my car. And god forbid someone was standing out there and it landed on their head. So, and I have a picture of that, too. The last thing I wanted to mention was that I have been pleading, asking you guys that I've been wanting to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I haven't been appointed for various reasons. You guys, some of you talk about how it's hard to find someone that's willing and dedicated to be on the commissions and to stay long-term. And so I've decided about maybe a month and a half ago, Ms. Viallos, I asked her to remove me from the Civil Service Commission. Because I believe maybe that's also impeding me from serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so even though I believe we're doing good work, I don't want that to be a reason as to why I'm not being appointed to the Planning and Zoning. As I've said before, I know the ordinances. I've read them. I've reread them. I'm an attorney, so reading ordinances and revamping them is something that we need and something that I believe that I can be a great asset to that commission. And so, you know, I just think it's a little disappointing that I haven't been appointed, even though there's two open spots. I was ready to go since day one. I attend their meetings regularly, actually pretty as common as you see me here. I attend their meetings. I go to, I have better attendance than some of the commissioners, actually, that are presently appointed. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Margie Perez? Ms. Perez, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name's Margie Perez. I wanted to come in and give thanks to everybody that participated in the turkey run that we had. We provided forty-two turkey baskets of everything. Is your sound? Oh, okay, okay. And I wanted just to come in and show you what we do and thank all the people that help us with the city of Socorro, Socorro PD, administration. Everybody was a great help. So, I'll come back next year and ask for your help again. We're doing great work. Just FYI, we're having our toy giveaway Saturday morning at Peter Piper's. No parents are allowed. Those kids are chosen by the counselors at the schools and we're bringing in three hundred children. So, this is just a little bit of what we did on November seventeenth. De parte de Ideal Offroad y Ideal Climate Socorro Independent Riders. Everybody was really, really very appreciative and there is a lot of need here in Socorro. So, thank you so much again. And I don't know if it's legal, but I put the city logo on my banner. Is it legal or, I mean, I don't know. Do I need to? I mean, I can take it off, but, you know, it's just a thanks. I have a banner with all of the people that have supported our cause throughout the years. This is our fifteenth year. And then let me know.
We appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Marta Martinez? Mayor, for the record, Mr. Rene Rodriguez arrived to the meeting at six oh nine.
Buenas tardes.
Señora Martinez, tiene tres minutos.
Gracias. Buenas tardes, este, al nuestros representantes, el Consilio, la gente que nos acompaña. Soy nuevamente pidiéndoles la ayuda y esperando que nos apoyen. Estoy en representación de mi comunidad de Grijalva Gardens. Sigo con lo de los bases y ahorita los días están más fríos. Espero que esta vez si nos puedan echar la mano. No quiero que mi comunidad pierda la confianza con nuestros representantes. Es lo que nos trae aquí y ojalá nos puedan apoyar. Sería todo. Gracias.
María del Pilar Carrillo? Señora Carrillo tiene tres minutos.
Buenas tardes. Vengo por lo mismo de la señora Martinez. A ver si nos pueden echar la mano porque nuestros niños se van caminando y cuando llueve hay mucho lodo por falta de las banquetas. Gracias.
Alicia Bosque? Señora Bosque tiene tres minutos.
Mi nombre es Alicia Bosques. Venía a ver qué me resolvieron tocante al terreno que tengo en la calle Musca. Uno, uno nueve seis en Socorro. ¿Cómo? Por la calle Musca. Gracias.
Angie Barrera? Ms. Barrera, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Angelica Barrera and I'm here to see if tonight we could find a resolution so that we could all work together in conjunction along with SISD for the transportation that the community of Socorro has lost. And hopefully we're able to resolve it just for the children more than anything that they need this, especially with the weather, climate changes. So hopefully tonight we'll be able to get the ball rolling. Thank you.
Karina Rivera? Ms. Rivera, you have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. I just came to invite the council and the community here to, we're working with, the Office of Congressman Will Hurd is working with a local judge who's doing, who also partnered up with Ford Bliss and is doing active shooter presentations throughout the different governments in our communities and different businesses. So I just wanted to let you guys know if you guys are interested, we're happy to work together and make that happen. If you need more information, I'm happy to provide it to you, but that was, that was, that was all I had to say. Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers. Mr. Ora?
Mayor, at this time, could we move items number twenty-three, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty in that order? Twenty-three? Thirty-two? Thirty-three? And thirty?
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cisnero Nevada?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiello?
Yes.
Moving on to item number twenty-three. Discussion and action to adopt Resolution five fifty-seven where the city of Socorro pledges to support the EPC W one D one's grant application to the Texas Water Development Board Agricultural Water Conservation Program for fiscal year two thousand nineteen for improvements to the Franklin-Feeder Canal that will lead to water conservation, drought mitigation, and will benefit the residents and agricultural businesses of the city of Socorro.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Thank you.
Is there a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and members of City Council. My name is Omar Martinez. I'm with the Opaso County Water Improvement District or the Irrigation District. Before moving on to the item, I wanted to extend my thanks to you on behalf of the district with your support this previous year. The district was awarded a million, toward fifty thousand dollars worth of grants to improve our conveyance system and to do some design work. You all, last year extended several resolutions of support. And thanks to that, we will be able to conserve over four thousand acre-feet of water each year. That is enough water for over eight thousand households each year or the equivalent of a thousand acres of farmland. So it's a significant chunk of water. So today, we are, we want to continue this momentum and again, we're asking for your support to submit an application to the Texas Water Development Board to again, concrete line, one of our major canals. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Mr. Ora?
Is there a match for this or is this just a plain grant?
This is a competitive program. It does require a match, although the match required is only fifty percent. The district is providing an eighty percent match. So this is about a million dollars worth of a project.
Ms. Viallos?
I'm sorry, can you explain, can you go into, explain that eighty percent is the district? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so, the total project costs are nine hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty dollars. We are requesting two hundred thousand dollars from the Texas Water Development Board.
From the city of Socorro?
No, this is from the Texas Water Development Board. This is a state-funded program. This comes at no cost to the city of Socorro.
This would be your in-kind and matching contribution, correct?
The district is providing almost eight hundred thousand dollars worth of, yes, of cash and in-kind.
Thank you. Mayor, we have a speaker, Miriam Cruz?
I have a question for the gentleman. Or that you all maybe want to think about. How much of the canal will be, how much acreage or how many miles or feet or whatever will be cemented? And how might that affect biodiversity? Obviously, conservation of water is absolutely needed and I'm all for it. But how might that affect biodiversity in our canal systems? Thank you.
So to answer that question, we will be lining five thousand five hundred feet of the Franklin-Feeder Canal. This is located on the northeastern part of the old Socorro wastewater treatment plant. Now that is now abandoned. Pretty much, the project stands right at the corner of the Rio Bosque waste, the Rio Bosque Park. And then it ends at Socorro Road where it intersects. To answer your question about how it will impact biodiversity, that canal is disturbed due to maintenance and grading of the canal. So what that means is that plants generally don't grow in that area. Again, because we tend to clear everything out every, pretty much at the beginning and at the end of the irrigation season. So where it can impact biodiversity, that is, it's a pretty complicated question. If you want to specify a little bit more, for example, are you talking about how the plants or the wildlife that is surrounding the canal, how that will be impacted? If that's the case, again, the land is already disturbed, so the impact will be minimal. What we're gonna do is we're gonna get in there, we're gonna concrete line. And once we are complete, we complete the concrete lining, then obviously plants won't grow on the concrete line section. But the areas around generally will not be disturbed. Other than that, with the amount of water that we conserve, that water is normally lost to seepage and evaporation. So some of that water does go underground and it might be recovered at a later date. In fact, the district has four wells, groundwater recovery wells. So whatever water we lose, we tend to recover it, but the water lost to evaporation, we generally lose it in this area. Does that answer your question?
No, what's next?
We need to take the vote. We need to take the vote.
Okay.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cisnero Nevada?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiello?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number thirty-two. Discussion and action to renew district office space agreement for Will Hurd Congressman, District Representative.
Motion to approve for discussion, second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you all know, Will Hurd, we leases a office space from our administration building. He was just re-elected. So we are coming to counsel. Ms. Rivera has approached me and is asking if we can renew the contract. I don't know if you have any questions. Ms. Rivera is here.
Mr. Perez?
Well, not necessarily a question, but a comment that it's good to have a congressman right there.
Yes, in her building. Mr. Rodriguez?
And I agree with Mr. Perez, you know, when we got on board back in two thousand thirteen, you know, we never had a congressman here. So it's very beneficial for people that don't know because not only can our constituents come and knock at the door, you know, because he's got somebody here, but we also are privy to him here. So it's something that is good and you'll have two levels of government. So, it's a good idea.
Mayor, we have a speaker, Miriam Cruz?
Am I good to go? Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting for the go for the three minutes. I couldn't agree, I mean, obviously, I can't disagree with the fact that it's great to have two bodies of government in one location. My only concern is for a dollar a year, is that, um, why spending or non-charging or in-kind contributions to a state, US representative? I'm not sure. I'm not saying we gotta charge him a million dollars. I'm just saying, you know, an office space is an office space. I believe that the city, I'm not sure what her title is, but whoever sits in the front that receives any individual that walks into that building, I'm sure that some of her time is eaten up by the time that they're not there to see the city of Socorro, but there to see Representative Will Hurd or one of his employees or... And so, you know, a dollar a year, which I believe that's what's in the backup, is that's what the contract is. You know, absolutely, it's great to have him there, but maybe have a reasonable fee for having an individual there and taking in constituents or guiding them who they need to go talk to when they're not there to see the city of Socorro. That's my only concern. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, just to answer your question, Pique Ayew was our first congressman to be housed in our facility. We charged him a dollar. So I don't want to be one of the individuals to say, "Oh, well, just because now Hurd is here, we're gonna charge him more." I think that we have to keep the standard the way it is. Because, you know, if you want to do it to a Republican, then it goes back to the same thing. Oh, then why didn't you do it to a Democrat? So, so there won't be any waves for now. It should stay the same. And it will continue being the same.
Ms. Viallos?
I, aside from what Mr. Rodriguez has said, I believe he brings a lot to the table. He has helped us tremendously. If anybody's interested in finding out, I'm sure Karina Rivera, she was up here a little while ago, will be more than happy to let you know that he is working for the city of Socorro. Like, he has, he has, he has a good interest in us and for us to charge him when he's actually for us, I, you know, I think a dollar is justifiable.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cisnero Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiello?
Yes.
Item number thirty-three. Discussion and action to approve a resolution deeming Grijalva subdivision a high-risk area for students.
Mr. Ora?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution deeming Grijalva subdivision a high-risk area for students for discussion.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of months ago, this subdivision did come to us because they had lost their bus route. So there, we had a community meeting with Ms. Macias, which is Assistant Superintendent from Socorro ISD. And she provided us a criteria, a list of criteria, we could, where we could deem the area a hazardous traffic. Between me and Mr. Medina, we kind of looked at it and there is, was one area that we could identify. And that's what we're here to present to you all tonight.
Good evening, members. Michael, I'm the city planner. I was asked by the city manager to examine the tests that the board will look at in terms of identifying a potential hazardous traffic condition for the students in that area. So if you will, there's some photos that are part of your backup and then I'll also show you all. So part of the documentation or the test that would ultimately allow the board to look at an area that has a hazardous condition, it would specify that there are no walkways to, for in this case, to a school. So what we did is that we examined, and this is Moon Road, and we're identifying major intersections that traverse Moon Road. And so as you can see, is that, like a lot of the areas in the city, is that this is another area that has no improvement in terms of pedestrian walkways, sidewalks, and et cetera. It's also been observed that some of the students have walked in the mud when it rains. But recently, I actually observed students walking on the road simply because it's smoother to walk on the road. So by our definition and looking at these photos, you know, to have a more of an extant condition to reinforce to you and make a recommendation that perhaps there is a hazardous condition for the students here. So this is one photo. Here's another photo looking down towards Moon in the intersection of North Loop. I will say that the major intersection, which is a Texop facility, does comply with all ADA requirements. But the argument here is the improved condition on Moon Road itself leading to the neighborhood. Here's another. Just looking towards into the subdivision itself. And then the last one is also off of Moon Road showing closer intersection to the North Loop intersection. So if anybody has any questions or comments about the existing condition.
Mr. Perez?
I'm glad that you're doing this for this area, but also there are other areas I think it would be worth consideration that admin meet with us individually or whatever, because in fact, I gave you an idea or gave you a concern earlier this evening about an area that fits this description as well. And I think there, that, and very quickly, and I know this is not part of this, but it's the area of Rio Vista. It's in Buford and Alameda.
Right.
Where the kids are walking towards the high school. That's unimproved and gets money and it fits all of these criteria. And I think that we need to have an expanded view of other areas that we need to address.
And that is something that's in our backup that once we, if we do, you know, proceed with deeming this area, if any other area comes to us with the same similarities, we kind of have to act in the same manner. Okay, and this is just to include the bus route. The SISD is requesting a resolution from the city that's deeming so they can proceed to add the route back into the system.
And I was just thinking that either the bus route or some kind of measure to be able to leverage funds to build a sidewalk or whatever the case may be that the state might deem it an emergency or of need to be able to do that.
Yes, sir. Part of the discussion that I've had with the city manager is to identify more areas. So this is, we want to make sure this is not a quick approach. Is that the idea here is that once we unveil the capital improvement program, we are going to identify all these elements that lack infrastructure and also come with a solution of how do we fund these projects? So for example, I know that this body has approved safer routes for school in trying to attract federal dollars at the NPO. So we'll use some of those same strategies along, working with the school district as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Viallos?
I had, I actually, in my district, last year, unfortunately, it was our past chief who handled it and it was not the city that actually handled it. A young boy was hit on Socorro Road because it's a two-way lane and the vehicles go around. And they ended up hitting the child with their mirror and kept going. Child ended up in the hospital, according to his father. He showed me the pictures at the hospital. And I called chief, I was having a meeting that day with some of the constituents there. And I called chief and chief was supposed to handle it and I don't know, I don't know what the outcome was. But it's, it's when they walk towards Socorro Road, which is, I believe, Texop. And can we coordinate with them on this, going to Campes, Campes de? Elementary. This is what, and it's not the first time, it's not the second time. I hear it all the time. And it, there's, I'm sorry, there's convenience stores and stores in that area. And so it's very dangerous for these kids, but they're walking to the, to the school. And, uh, so it's very dangerous for these kids, but they're walking to this, to the school. So is that something that we can coordinate? I'm sorry.
No, yes, absolutely. So, so obviously, because we're dealing with the state facility, we will be required to coordinate with the district engineering staff. Along with that is that, again, this, these are projects of regional significance that qualify for federal aid. Uh, Safe Road to School is one component. Uh, there's also TAP, uh, the Transportation Alternative Program. Um, I have some experience in all that, but ideally is that we would identify the at-risk corridors, and then you all would rank them for us, and then that's how we would unveil the capital improvement program and implementation.
Okay. So I'll, if you don't mind, I'll call you sometime next week. Maybe we can make an appointment?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, uh, run it through our city manager first.
Okay. Or, or I can call and we can consider...
No, you can contact him and then he can...
Okay. All right.
Mayor, we have two speakers. Marta Martínez?
Pues lo mismo, ¿verdad?, de que aquí están las fotos. Poco como la entendí, o sea, tenemos muchas áreas con falta de banquetas, con calles inseguras para los niños. Hay niños chiquitos que ya les había yo comentado a mis representantes que, que fueran, los miraran pasar en las mañanas. Una señora con carriola que los vieron. Y este, no es nada que estemos pidiendo para nosotros. Son nuestros niños. Nomás les pedimos que, que nos ayuden, ¿verdad?, por ellos. Tenemos muchas, le repito, muchas calles con falta de banquetas. Ahorita yo sé que la, la ciudad no tenemos los suficientes fondos para arreglar las calles, pero perdeo que nos echen la mano, a que nos regresen la ruta de los bases. Gracias.
María del Pilar Carrillo?
Necesitamos que nos echen la mano para eso, porque nuestros niños están batallando mucho para irse a la escuela. Gracias.
Mr. Rodriguez? Enchi Barrera?
Okay, so once again, as a, uh, young man that just came up right now, he mentioned something that the kids are having to walk on the paved, uh, road, and that is due because there's no sidewalks. I mean, the road, that's where all the vehicles, that's where traffic flows. That is a safety concern more than anything. And I think that if we all come together as a community, we can make a difference, especially, uh, for the SISD to feel a little bit more of a pressure on them, uh, and for them to actually wanna work with, uh, the community as well. And we would just want our voices heard, especially for our kids. It's more than anything the kids. I know that this maybe, there was the talks about looking at other areas, which I agree, I totally agree with that, but I think, uh, it has to be something that has to be done quick. I mean, it's just a ha, a safety issue for all the kids. It's just safety concern. And, uh, the weather, more than anything, we're in winter right now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rodriguez?
You know, um, we, we went out to your community. We understand the need. One of the things that we didn't capture on the photos was the canal that enter, right before you enter your subdivision, there's a canal, and there's no sidewalks. So that, that is one of my biggest issues that, that, other than kids walking on the street. It's not the only area. We've, we've, we know that. Um, the city's been enacted since eighty-five. Nobody has really done anything about it. It was all county. Um, and it, it just takes a lot of time for us with the small budget we have. So what I wanna address is that we do go out for, 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 uh, Safe Road to School. I was one of them. Mr. Medina, when he was in the NPO director, he knew that I went there, and I cried, believe it or not, because they shut me down. Okay? And I said, how could you do this? So I'm a very avid advocate about our children. I understand that our children are our future. And what I'm trying to say is, there's other areas we are going to help you as much as we can. I don't know how the vote's gonna go, but all I'm gonna say is, um, I wish that you guys would've followed me to Socorro Independent School District. I went there. I fought for you guys. I talked to them. I spoke on your behalf, you know, and, um, they came back and said, hey, this is what you gotta do, because they wouldn't, this is not, this is something that we don't, we could ask for you, we could fight for you, but ultimately, you know, the decision is in their hands. The good thing is that they came to the table, they talked to our staff, with our city manager and, and, uh, Mr. Medina, and, and here we are. So this is one of the avenues that we are looking at, and hopefully, you know, it goes our way. I just wanna say thank you because, you know, uh, you guys have been waiting patiently and, and, and see how it goes.
Ms. Ellos?
Mr. Medina, why did they, why did they lose their, their, their bus route? Why was it lost?
So, so my understanding as part of the requirement here is that because the state was constructing or reconstructing North Loop, there existed a hazardous traffic condition. So that warranted the busing of the students to the school. So just like we are identifying a hazardous condition of them walking on the roadway, uh, the school district itself identified the threat of students walking safely across North Loop. That itself triggers part of this test.
So because we widened North Loop Road, now it's a hazard to the, the students in this area?
No.
It shortened.
It shortened the...
Right. I, I guess, let me explain it again. Is that, once the state decided to make improvements to the roadway, the students were no longer able to cross safely. There's a lot of vehicles. There's a lot of, uh, lanes that are closed down, and you have all this construction going on that's a hazard to the student. So the students couldn't walk safely across the roadway. The designation in the language specifies that if that risk exists, the school board may shuttle the students to the school. So once Techstock finished the construction, they removed that perk, if you will. So what we're, what we're doing now is that we're establishing that there is still a condition that is hazardous for the students.
Right.
So in other words, they got the, the bus because there was a traffic improvement, and it was hazardous for students to walk across.
And now that it's concluded, they removed the...
Absolutely.
Got it.
Because it's not more than two miles away.
I see.
Correct. So they, they remove it.
I understand now. It, it didn't make sense, but now it makes, okay.
Okay.
So, but it didn't exist prior to the construction?
Correct.
That, okay, that little part I didn't, okay. All righty.
René Rodríguez?
Hi.
Tito Nevada?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
Ivan Colompiyalo?
Yes.
Item number thirty, discussion on action to approve or deny an interlocal agreement with El Paso County for ambulance services to the city of Socorro and to authorize city manager or her designate to execute agreement.
Motion to approve. Wait, wait, wait. It's to approve or deny? So what are we approving?
Yeah, approve the, the...
Interlocal agreement.
The interlocal agreement, yes.
Can we, uh...
Motion to approve?
To approve or discuss? Do we have a second?
I'm sorry?
Right. You're making a, uh, a motion to approve?
Yes.
For discussion or just to...
Well, I mean, we have to have discussion anyway.
Do we have a second?
Second?
I thi, I think we just had the discussion, but let's wait. Let's not waste any more time. I mean, just approve this second.
Well, I don't know if there's any changes since we last...
Is there anything you would like to say, Mr. Bracamontes?
No, Ramón Bracamontes from County Administration. I'm just here, here in case you all have a last-minute question.
So when are we gonna start paying?
Okay, so, um, staff is, has a different recommendation?
Good evening, Mayor Council. So we received this agreement. Um, it was August thirtieth. We adopted our budget September thirteenth of this year. So we did not budget for this particular agreement. Although conversations started taking place, uh, around April of this year, um, we were approached by the Paso County letting us know that this was coming down. However, the agreement did not specify a cost until October fifteenth. By that time, we had already approved our budget. We are ac, actually recommending denial at this time, and the only reason for that is I feel that the city needs to do their due diligence and find out if we actually can go out and do a bid and see how that would cost us before we move forward with an agreement. I think that the approach is good. I just don't think they, uh, with the information was provided for us to make a recommendation or even place it into our budget this year. Now, next year, once we make, you know, we're asking for this fiscal year to go out there and, and really research it, then next year, by all means, I think, uh, if that's the way we wanna go, we should. But right now, staff is strongly recommending denial.
At this time, and, 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 uh, receive my motion to approve, to deny the, the interwork.
Second.
Ms. Ellos?
I, I just wanna ask council to remember that we know what we're dealing with up here. We have a whole packet, but our constituents, when we vote and they don't know what we're voting on, is very disrespectful to them. I know because they've told me before. So I, this is why I always want discussion. Plus, we did get new information. We would've voted on something, and we would not have had the whole information on it. So, um, for respect of our constituents, um, let's try to discuss the item, even if it's just a recap, so they understand what we're, we're voting on and what we're talking, speaking of. Please. Thank you.
Do, do we have any speakers, ma'am?
Do we have any speakers? Yes, we do. Um, Maryam Cruz? That was their only speaker?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Um, just so people will know, um, I, I understand what Ms. Vialos says, but that's what we have in the agenda, but, um, the recap is, is that they want us to pay for the ambulance services that they provided for us for many years. Unfortunately, they gave it to us when we already adopted our budget for this year. So, and I can't see it as to say, I'm going to try to give you this money when we already budgeted for it. I can't, I, it's, it's not, it's, it, it wouldn't be fair to our constituents, which is you, because then I'm gonna be forced to somehow, some way, get money from somewhere else and not do a project that we already wanting to do. So for that reason, uh, you know, I agree with our staff, you know, and if, if, uh, it'll give us time for next year to see if we're able to, and that's enough time for us to make a decision next, you know, June and May when we're doing our budget for the fiscal, next fiscal year. And that's the only reason where I stand. We didn't get the numbers, and, you know, that's it. And for you guys to know, the other passing, just pass.
Mr. Rata?
And just for clarification, there, El Paso County's not the one providing, uh, life ambulance services. Their, this agreement is to ensure that they have the equipment, that Life Ambulance Inc. has the equipment, has the personnel, and has, um, uh, ambulances on standby, okay? This ambulance, life ambulance has, I mean, has to continue providing service to pay their payroll, to pay their bills, to do. I know Horizon was and probably voted against it. I haven't verified with, uh, but, but pretty much, they're not the ones providing the service. There's a contract between El Paso County and Life Ambulance Inc. to make sure that, that, you know, that they're, they're keeping them on check.
Your operation continues.
Well, I wanna know that if I go into an agreement with them, what the cost would be just for our smaller organization? Or what if smaller municipalities gather together, create a district, and see how, uh, if it's more cost effective, maybe it's not. But all I'm saying is, is that we didn't receive this information till October fifteenth in order for us to budget or do our homework on it. And, um, like I said, the conversations did start in April, but we really didn't get the needs, the, the requirements, the rules uh, between entities until October the fifteenth. And then we, we've been working back and forth, uh, through the attorneys. And once we received the information, I mean, that's just strongly how I feel that I do recommend denial at this time.
Ms. Ellos?
And the community is not at danger. We're still protected. We still have services. We'll still have, um...
Well, life ambulance still has to operate.
Yes.
Right? Um, go ahead.
Yes, just, uh, just two points. Horizon City, which is a much smaller city than you all, did ask Life Ambulance for a proposal to have an exclusive agreement between Life and Horizon City. They will talk about that on Tuesday, uh, when they have their council meeting. But I think the proposal for them is gonna come out to about two hundred thousand or more a year to have an exclusive, uh, agreement with them, because they have to worry about the radio frequency fees, working with the sheriff, working with those police department, working with the ESDs. All that is in the contract already written in with the county. So we're paying for all that cost. And then, uh, the other question is, the ambulance, the contract between Life and the county, uh, is at the discretion of the county commissioners. There is nothing in there that, uh, says they have to provide service within the city limits of Socorro, uh, if the commissioners decide to take a, a different action after your all's vote. So Life can pull out of Socorro if they want to, but it would be up to the county commissioners.
Mr. Perez?
But I, at this point, I think it would be, it would be unwise in terms of our fiduciary responsibility not to have it included in next year's budget if we propose to have it in next year's budget. I think that, that we would be doing a disservice to our, our constituents as well if we, to what Mr. Rodriguez said, pull out money from this project to pay for another thing that we hadn't anticipated. And as it is, as it is, those things are gonna come up anyway. Uh, during the fiscal year that, that forbidden emergency of some sort. So those things are gonna happen anyway, but I think if we can prevent it, we might as well do that right now.
Cortez, and if, if, once we start researching and if for every reason, I feel that we either are in danger, I mean, I will be the first one to call a special meeting and request us to move forward. I just, at this time, I don't feel confident enough that, number one, we received, um, we did our due diligence and our homework to be able to spend those funds.
Hi.
Tito Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, presentation by college interns regarding city internship.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Victor Rata, Director of Public Affairs. I am very, uh, proud and excited to present to you two of our city interns from the collegiate level that are presenting their final project to the city tonight. Uh, one is from El Paso Community College at the Mission Branch. The other is the University of Texas at El Paso. Uh, without further ado, I introduce Diana Rodríguez and Maria Ángelés.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for inviting us today. Like Mr. Rata said, my name is Maria Ángelés, and this is my partner, Diana Rodríguez. We are both interns for the city of Socorro under the Department of Recreation and Public Relations. So both Diana and myself have been interns for the city of Socorro since August twenty-seventh, and our official end date should be December fourteenth. Today's presentation will highlight some of our experiences during our internship. So I will be the first one. So I have actually been an intern with the city of Socorro before. I was actually an intern for the city during the summer of two thousand seventeen. So this is my second time around. During this time, however, I focused on different, um, on a different aspect of the internship. During this time around, I focused on the social media campaigning, creation of marketing material, and organization and orientation of city intern programs. So my focus was during the events, I would be the one, um, taking pictures of the public, of the city council members... of the city council members, of, um, the different things that we had going, going on. And throughout the event, I would be posting them on our social media platforms like Instagram, Twitter, Facebook. That was my duties during the events. Um, I also created marketing material, which was creating the flyers that I would be posting prior to the event. And the, the thing that excited me the most was I was actually, I actually trained and organized the high school internship program. So, besides having an internship program in college level, we also have one within the Socorro High School, and I was the one that trained the, um, high school interns on the, on how the City of Socorro works, the different departments that we have, and I trained them on how to do the different task and duties. Now, my partner Diana Rodriguez will be highlighting her internship experience.
With my internship experience in the City of Socorro, I was also working on the social media campaign with TVIs and the storm mon- water management campaign. With the social media, I was doing more of the office work while I was posting ahead. The press releases, any campaigns that we're working on, for example, the Work Zone Willie, when we had the different, that campaign going on, or the safety tips from FEMA that we receive as well. With the TVIs, it's a search engine for news broadcast, so I was the one overlooking the, any news with the council, any news with the city, any situations like that. That's what the TVIs was and what I was working on. Also, the storm matter, water management campaign, I was working with the grants department on translating the page, um, tab on our city website and the flyers that we posted to make the constituents aware of the storm water and how it's polluted or, and how to prevent it from being polluted. Um, next, we have our, I interviewed Maria on how her experience was now to how her experiences was in the past.
First internship experience with the City of Socorro was in the summer of 2017. However, being a summer intern and being a fall intern was extremely different. This time around, I was aware of the expectations in both the City of Socorro and the Recreation Department. I was also aware of the different staff members and the abilities that each one had, so I knew how to work better with each one of them this time around. But I think the biggest difference was this time, I was trusted with a lot more responsibilities that a first-time intern wouldn't be trusted with. For example, I was trusted with closing and opening the, the, both the recreation centers that we have, such as the Rio Vista Community Center and the Chayo Apodaca Community Center.
The following question was, what would she say to prospective, uh, City of Socorro interns?
To prospective interns for the City of Socorro is be ready for an internship, internship experience like no other. Being an intern for the City of Socorro allows you to grow on new, on old skills that you already have and develop new ones, such as teamwork, leadership, communication, organization. Um, it allows you to work with different types of people, and it's just, it gives you a lot of hands-on experience that not, uh, not other internships could offer. Overall, being an intern for the City of Socorro allows you to grow as a student, whether you're a high school student or a college student, an individual, and a leader.
So, I asked my partner Diana, um, a different set of questions. So, the first question that I asked her is, like I mentioned, this is her first time being an intern, so how was she an asset to the Department of Recreation?
I believe I was able to bring in innovative ideas when it came to tasks like the events and how to bring in more people to our centers, being the Rio Vista Community Center and the Chayo Apodaca Community Center. Also, when it came to setting up flyers, where we should locate flyers, where we should set them up, for, whether it be at schools, whether it be in the different neighborhoods in the City of Socorro. I also believe that I was able to help the staff with the office work or their tasks. For example, when they would go out for event tasks, to fulfill their event tasks, I was able to cover the offices or the centers, whether it be me covering the Chayo Apodaca Community Center or me be covering the Rio Vista Community Center, where we have more, um, constituents coming in.
So, the second question that I asked Diana was, how, why should the City of Socorro continue with the internship program?
The internship program with the City of Socorro is very valuable, because it teaches us students the different career choices that there is to offer, not just in the city, but it helps us develop skills for any job, for example, with the customer service skills that we develop. Um, it also shows us the different people that we're able to encounter with, whether it be a city manager, whether it be somebody from IT, or somebody from court. It teaches us to value the community that we have as well and to the different skills that we're faced with in each department.
So, at this time, we want to thank the City of Socorro for providing both of us with this opportunity to be interns with the City of Socorro, and of course, thank our supervisor, Mr. Victor Rata, for, um, you know, teaching us everything that we have learned throughout this semester and preparing us for our next challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to thank both of these young ladies, because they were troopers. They helped every department night or day. We are open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and sometimes they worked from 8:00 AM to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Uh, there's a lot of things that go through our department. We're very proud to be the community place or the meeting place to help all of our constituents. Uh, we do feel that it's very important that we start training at an early age, which is why we reach out to all schools within our community. We enlist in them the importance of treating everyone equally, fairly, as well as the importance of speaking Spanish as well as English. However, for us as staff members, it's important that we continue to use our youth to know what works and what doesn't. We're constantly adapting and changing, and I would like to thank both of these ladies for providing a valuable insight. We're very proud of them. They've helped Mr. Lartte on numerous occasions, as well as our staff, so we're very proud of them. They will be, uh, attending our employee appreciation, uh, employee appreciation luncheon, where you will also hear from the high school interns at that time. With, uh, with that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for providing good leadership as well.
Mr. Lartte?
I just wanted to add that, um, this past Tuesday, they were part of our chief of police interviews, and these, these young ladies are going somewhere. I mean, they, they, they did an excellent job, and I wouldn't expect any different from them. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Item number six, presentation by city manager regarding October's 2018 monthly report.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a recap for our October, uh, month. Our Municipal Courts Department collected $56,279. They received 299 citations from Socorro PD, 47 citations from the DPS, and zero ordinance violations. Our HR Department celebrated October's birthdays and anniversaries on October the 26th. Employee of the month was Alejandra Valades, our grant coordinator. They had no civil service meeting in October. We did have three separations in October, which were Sonia Olivas, our code enforcer, Sergio, uh, Sergio Terrazas, part-time labor, and Julio Lujan, a full-time laborer. We did interview, conducted interview for six candidates for the city auditor position on October the 24th, and we had a new hire, George Escudero, in the police department as a police officer. Our Parks and Public Works Department, uh, conducted their systematic approach in the subdivision that were maintained in October, where Belen Plaza, Colonias, Monterosales, Allen Park Streets, Villa Hispana Colonia, Grijalva Gardens, Wise Men Estates, Las Milpas Colonia, and Pool Colonia in San Isidro. Water pickup after the rain on October the 24th, there was an estimated of 87,000 gallons, um, picked up throughout the city. And they also continued to maintain and groom all of our city and pounding areas. Our police department received 1,985 calls for service. On the 27th, two applicants tested for the physical fitness, which failed, and the police officers continued to attend trainings to keep them in compliance with their TICLO certifications. Our city clerk conducted and prepared minutes for two regular meetings on October the 4th and the 18th, received 27 open records requests and responded to 21, and prepared six publications. Our planning and zoning department collected, in the month of October, $10,537, issued 117 permits, 11 registrations, six applications, and 12 letters. Our recreations department had their na- the National Night Out on October the 23rd in combination with our police department. They had their Halloween parade, H.D. Hilli Halloween Parade, and Fright Farm on October the 26th. They completed the Work Zone Willie Safety Campaign on October the 9th, participated in the Socorro High School Parade, participated, um, for the Weko Elementary Parade, and they had a Career Day October 25th. Rio Vista attendings were at 1,713. For Chayo Apodaca, we had 259 attendees for the month. Our IT department installed new server rack at Bulldog Park, uh, still continuing with the Fusion Network project, upgraded soundboard equipment for the city council chambers, assisted with the Fright Farm, the Haunted House, and troubleshooted all IT-related issues for all city departments. Our grants department logged in approximately 159 service hours across various grant projects. They were awarded $50,000 for PD for terrorism-related training. $275,000 were awarded for the flood drainage improvement along the Sparks Arroyo. Ms. Valades also provides storm water management activities to the community to comply with our MS4 permit by providing storm water pollution prevention material at our events, which you heard one of our interns assisted her with. And that is a recap of our departments. I don't know if you all have any questions, and those are just highlights. Any questions, concerns?
No.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Item number 11, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot 1, Binedo Acres, Block A, at 11196 Musket Road, from R1, Single Family Residential, to R2, Medium Density Residential, to allow a second dwelling. 7:04, public hearing is now open.
Ms. Bosque has stood up in public comment, and this is the item.
Alicia Bosque, su artículo de la agenda.
Buenas noches otra vez. Quería saber qué resolvieron sobre mi terreno, si voy a poder fincar, o qué decisión tomar.
Señora Bosques?
Sí.
En el siguiente artículo es donde vamos a tomar el voto, pero en este artículo usted puede decir por qué necesita esta segunda casa en su terreno. Y todos los demás vecinos también pueden venir a decir sus comentarios.
Dispense, no le entendí.
En este, en este artículo usted puede comentar por qué necesita esta segunda casa, y los demás vecinos también tienen oportunidad de decir sus comentarios.
Bueno, mire, tengo tres hijos, y a otro me falta uno para hacerle su casa, porque hay un trailer house ahí, es de mi hija. Enseguida quiero hacer una casa para mi hijo y su esposa. Esa es la razón que yo necesito hacer esto. Y tengo como siete meses que vine a hacer la solicitud, y no me han contestado nada. Quisiera saber qué resolver. That's all. Gracias.
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 7:06, public hearing is now closed. Item number 12, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot 1, Binedo Acres, Block A, at 11196 Musket Road, from R1, Single Family Residential, to R2, Medium Density Residential, to allow a second dwelling.
Motion to deny based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Mr. Perez?
Mr. Terrazas, um, what was the, I see that staff recommended denial and board recommended approval, what's the disparity there?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The reason for that is because this request was, once we look into the property, we noticed that it was contrary to the master plan, uh, just because of the fact that it was an amendment. That's the reason we used to, uh, recommend denial, but when it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, they looked at the entire subdivision and they decided that it was adding a second building inside this property would not be contrary to the existing design or density of the subdivision. Uh, in the last meeting, when we presented this item, you requested for us to look into the possibility of maybe creating an arterial road that might affect this building. So, in, in your backup material, you're going to see a couple of options right there. This is what we found. So, this is the location where Mrs. Bosque is trying to add a second building, and in the previous meeting, you were going to recommend for her to build in the back. So, if you build a, a major arterial road right here, measuring the existing right-of-way, right now, there's 75 feet of right-of-way. If you want to create a major arterial road, you would need 120 feet. And, uh, it also depends on, because we don't have a plan of how the arterial road is going to look now, so assuming that it's going to fall right in the middle of the 75 feet existing right-of-way, when you get to this point, you would need to obtain 23 feet from Mrs. Bosque's property. By obtaining those 23 feet, if she builds a building right here, it will be 20 feet away from the new right-of-way, if that makes sense. The 20 feet would be okay for the R2, because that's what's required for R2. Um, but if in the future you want to create a minor arterial, you're going to need 90 feet. With, by, uh, uh, by adding 90 feet of right-of-way, you would need eight feet from her property. Those are the options that we found, and if you allow her to build a building right here, she would be 34 feet away from the right-of-way.
Mr. Perez?
One more question, Mr. Terrazas. Okay, um, I see two, uh, see, uh, roofs, roofs rights in the front, at the bottom. Are those in any way connected to the property?
No, sir. Her property is only outlined, uh, as you see it right here. And then there's this little section here, it's inside, all this area is fenced in, but this little corner is outside her property. This is only her property limit.
And so that, so the line towards the bottom, uh, that's, that's fenced out, or fenced in, rather?
This is outside, this is a separate lot. And, uh, if I can turn on this layer real quick, so you can see how it really lays out. This is a separate lot, this is another one, and this is another one. They're owned by separate people. So, what you see on the yellow line, this is only Mrs. Bosque's property.
So, they're already pretty cramped, cramped in there?
But...
Mr. Rodriguez?
But we had, when you guys brought this last meeting, we said to look into building it in the back instead, because what I've, that's what I said, is that in the future, we are going to expand that street, in the future. So we, we're not, what I was thinking is, we shouldn't deny her, we should deny her because she wants to put it in that spot, but we could just say, why don't you build it behind her existing home? Therefore, it doesn't matter in the future if we're going to acquire some land or twenty feet or eight feet, that would have taken care of the issue. The only issue that I do have is that staff says recommendation, but what I want to clarify is, I want clarity, Ms. Medina, on, you're denying it because she wants to put it on this spot? Or you guys would reverse your opinion if it was built behind it? Or that would make no difference?
It would make no difference, no, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, typically, when you're considering rezoning, you're not contemplating a particular structure.
Okay. No, no, so that they'll know even if they build it in the back or not. We understand, but like Ms. Yallos said, it's, just so they can understand what we're discussing.
Mr. Perez?
So if a structure was constructed on any part of that lot, would they meet the setbacks?
Yes, sir.
They would?
Yes.
Ms. Yallos?
Even after, if you create a major arterial, they would still meet the setbacks. It would be really tight, but they will, yes.
Just, I guess this helps now. Two constituents on Vineyard, one, not too long ago, we put lights out there for that constituent, and one more constituent. I guess they're gearing up the neighbors to sign a petition to whiten that street. Just, that's, that's the, so I think it's fair for her, for the owner to know that her neighbors really want to start petitioning. What is the young lady, what is the lady's name?
Señora Bosque. Nomás le quiero comentar, este, un poquito de información que a mí me llegó hace... I can't say it? Okay. Bueno, no lo puedo decir porque no está en la agenda, pero me gustaría platicar con usted. Okay.
I just think it would help that her neighbors are gearing up. Okay. Okay, thank you.
But it goes, I'm sorry, I'm here, I mean...
Mr. Perez?
But it's within the topic of future expansion. Because we've already touched that topic here in terms of what Mr. Terrazas said, that there is a potential for expansion of the street. And so part of our consideration for denial would be that the set, the...
The future, okay.
That the right-of-way would affect.
So we're good, Jim? So we're good?
Yes.
Okay, then we're good.
Okay. Señora Bosques? Nomás quiero comentarle, que en el último mes, dos residentes de Vineyard, que son sus vecinos, este, me hablaron para, a ver si les asistía con una petición para, este...
Ampliar la calle?
Ampliar la calle. Este, por eso le pienso que es buena información que usted sepa, porque si ellos vienen aquí a la ciudad y comienzan a exigir que la extiendan, y a lo mejor la ciudad lo aprueba, entonces va a estar afectada donde quiere poner usted actualmente su casa. Nomás quiero que sepan, no sé si vaya a pasar o no vaya a pasar, pero si hay dos personas. Okay? Y, sí.
Mr. Rodriguez?
We went to the Economic Development Plan up there in... Big Springs? No, what was it? Somewhere?
Port Worth?
And...
Port Worth?
Where we, no, no.
Austin?
In Austin. And one of the things that they were saying is that, in order for the future, the city to grow, we should expand our buildings, our infrastructure, especially our old infrastructure, like home, housing and stuff like that. And one of the things is that they really emphasize is that we should allow our residents to grow, expand an extra addition room or another building in their property, because we can and have the authority to let them. And that way, you build upon the old, and you create a little bit of a tax incentive for the city. I'm in the belief that, you know, as a property owner, you should be allowed to expand, to upgrade, you know? I don't think that, I know that our staff is recommending denial, and I understand that our planning, planning and zoning?
Yes.
Planning and zoning is, is, is approving, trying to approve it. I see both issues, I understand, but I see no problem if the house is built behind, if we allow that to be built behind, because even if you encroach the twenty feet or twenty-two feet, you still have a couple of feet before you even hit that middle line. And, and, and that would eliminate a future potential acquisition of, if they wanted to build something on that little area. So we could kill two birds with one stone if we were to say, we would probably want, and I'm not, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for any of you, I'm just speaking for myself. I would feel better to say, with a condition that you only build behind versus the side. I could live with that decision, and at the same time, you know, you increase the tax. Yeah, that's...
Mr. Perez?
I just have a question with regard to the subdivision, or rather, the lot. If you do a lot split, because that's what we're talking about, right? Wouldn't the new section have to conform with subdivision rules and regulations? Is it a mini sub, it's a mini subdivision?
It would be considered a minor plat, but the issue would be bigger, because now she would have to comply with additional setbacks. It would be a hardship for her.
See, that's what I was thinking, that you have to have issues of egress and ingress, all those things, and so I'm not sure that we're, if we were to approve it, it would be doing her any favors.
Right there.
Ms. Yallos?
Could, and I know you said that she could still build in that square that she wants to build, as long as she leaves a certain amount of feet, correct? Can you draw a line this way? I mean, I think that's the, I think that's the best thing to say. You can build whatever it is that you're gonna, or whatever they're gonna allow you to build in this area. This, and, you know, and let them, you know, deal with it, you know?
If you're looking at the amount of space that she has right here on the side, the ordinance requires a five-foot setback. Right there, she has ten. That's why she's okay. From here to the front, there's... There's forty-three feet. She has more than enough setbacks.
And how big is her house, or her, how big is what she's trying to build? How big is it?
This building is fifteen...
I...
Mr. Rodriguez?
I just have a question. Is that, is that just a foundation?
It's a concrete slab. She used to have a mobile home there. And I believe, I believe she said it was gonna be twenty by forty-five. That's the size of the concrete slab.
Twenty by forty-five?
Yes.
That's not very big. She's not asking for...
It's pretty, it's a pretty good size.
Yeah.
We have some pictures of the slab. It doesn't look big on the map, just because of the size of the lot.
Yeah, but I guess the question is, is she planning on building there, or just...
She wants to build.
Because if it's, if it's a slab for, let's say, a mobile home, it would have to accommodate a double one, because that's...
But that's already set up for, to build.
It looks a...
But you don't have, the thing is, you don't have inspections for the footings and all those things that go with it.
The footings would have to be certified by an architect, just because it's an existing structure, and we don't know if this is gonna be structurally capable of supporting any dead load, because they have right now some anchor bolts. But we did notice some cracks, and then on the side, they have some rebar, which is not allowed for anchorage for the bottom plate of the structure. Around the perimeter, they do have some anchor bolts, which this is allowed, this is okay, but not this. So somebody would have to excavate and certify that this existing concrete slab will still be able to hold the weight of what they're proposing.
Mr. Doran?
Mr. Medina? I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You're a city planner, and how does this fit into the plans for our city?
So as Mr. Terrazas had noted, is that when we reviewed this, it is not aligning with the master plan. So again, one thing that I want to emphasize is that we're regulatory planners. And so whatever the body has approved by the way of a comprehensive plan, land use, and zoning, we have to enforce that. However, there are mechanisms for residents to come in and ask for changes, and this is what's occurring right here. So anyone can come and ask for a zoning change to planning and zoning, and of course, you all, and of course, also through the Board of Adjustments. So here essentially is that her request is contrary to what the master plan says.
Mr. Perez?
I do have a question for the honor. Señora Bosques, una pregunta, por favor. Este, ¿qué es el propósito de la plancha que se ve en la pantalla? ¿Qué es, qué es el propósito de la plancha de cemento que se ve en la pantalla?
Construir.
¿No lo va a hacer más grande?
Sí.
And one of the issues I have is that you can't...
Mr. Rodriguez?
Gracias, señor.
One of the issues that I have is that you can't use the excuse that, oh, it's contradicting to our master plan, because I've been sitting here since two thousand and thirteen, and we've amended our master plan to allow other people to do changes. So you don't, I don't, I don't feel that we can just say, and justifiably say, well, it goes against our master plan. You know what? Yes, we know. We have many changes in our master plan to accommodate some of the stuff. And, and, and of course, you know, like I said, now we have to look at, she wants to expand. You know, those are issues that we...
Those are safety issues.
Yes, those are safety issues.
Mr. Arta?
One, just to add is that, you know, our city planner, we're building a master plan and want to amend our comprehensive plan. And based on this new arterial that we're applying for, that's one of the reasons that we're saying it's an expansion. It goes against our master plan and what we foresee in the future. And that is the reason why we're recommending denial.
Ms. Yallos?
So we're looking at three bedrooms, two baths, garage.
We still haven't seen the plans. We don't know what she's gonna propose. At this moment, she's only asking for the approval of the zoning change. And then from there, we're gonna ask her, if it gets approved, we'll ask her to bring in a set of plans, because they still don't have an idea what they wanna build.
Yeah, Joe makes a good point, and I realize you're talking about specific structures and subdivisions, but that's a little premature, not fair, that she hasn't proposed a subdivision. She hasn't proposed specific building plans. The only thing before you is the zoning change. The only thing you need to justify that is, you have to reach the conclusion that there's been a change in conditions in the area. That's it.
Not even, not even the spot?
No, particularly not the spot.
Okay.
Well, because you can zone, and then she can go somewhere she wants, as long as the lot is...
Mr. Navarres?
And that's where I see where the planning and zoning department came in and approved, or recommending approval, because we're just talking about initial.
So we're deciding what we...
And that's where planning and zoning, I believe, is where they came in and requested approval, because we're just talking about the initial permit.
But I will say it again, Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Um, if we approve the zoning, then we're allowing for it to move forward. So that's what we have to make a decision whether we want to or not. We understand that we are going to expand in the future. We don't know if it's tomorrow, or next year, or five years from now, or ten, but we know that it will happen. So we just have to think about whether we want to allow her for the zone change.
Oh...
Mr. Perez?
I think that we need to keep in mind, and I don't want to be an obstacle to people wanting to improve their lots. That's not my, my thing. But if we're talking about a major arterial being developed in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, whatever it may be, remember that she's gonna have her structure very close to the, to the right-of-way. And two things will either happen. Either we're gonna have to buy out those indivi... Because I already see that that, the bottom, the bottom... That structure is already very close to the street. So either we're gonna have to buy them out or do a eminent domain. And so if we go the route of buying them out, it's only gonna get more expensive between now and then.
Oh, yeah.
And so I think that if we are going to plan for that, we need to minimize our expenses on the front end.
I agree.
Miriam Cruz?
I'm a little disappointed that a lot of the discussion wasn't done in Spanish, or at least more explanation wasn't given to Ms. Bosque, since it's obvious that she only speaks Spanish. Estoy diciendo que es una lástima, señora Bosque, que no le han explicado todo lo que han estado platicando en español, porque obviamente nomás entiende el español usted. Entonces, estoy un poco... Qué desgracia, ¿verdad? Porque a lo mejor hay unas cosas que usted podría haber dicho para decir otras cosas. The second thing I want, the second thing I wanna say, bueno, you all understand Spanish. La segunda cosa que quiero decir o preguntar, estoy casi segura que el señor Terrazas durante la junta de planning and zoning platicó de... A lo mejor ahorita, it's, no está de acuerdo con el master plan, pero estoy casi segura que se habló que toda la otra, el resto de la vecindad tampoco está de acuerdo con el master plan. Y es también por eso, si me acuerdo correctamente, que el planning and zoning había también dicho que hay que aprobarlo, porque todas las otros lots en, en ese, alrededor, tenían dos edificios o no estaban de acuerdo con el planning, con el master plan. Así que, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Arta?
I just wanna point out that we do announce that if an interpreter is needed, that they requested forty-eight hours in advance, and we would make it available to them.
Mr. Perez, Mr. Navarres?
Señora, para aclararle, de hecho, si hablamos español. Este, usted puede solicitar que esté alguien presente para traducirle lo que usted tenga que, o qué preguntas necesita contestadas? Sí?
May you, you repeat the motion, please?
To Dina.
With a heavy heart, aye.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Graff, to the right?
Yes.
Victor, please?
Aye.
Es muy duro, porque las ordenancias es una, las reglas son, son las reglas. Yes.
Item number thirteen, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Track Twelve M, Block Ten, Socorro Grant at one eighty-one Ormsby Court from R one, Single Family Residential to M one, Light Industrial for the Storage of Vehicles. Seven thirty, public hearing is now open. Seven thirty-one, public hearing is now closed. Item number fourteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of track twelve M block ten Socorro Grant at one eighty-one Ormsby. Court from R one, single family residential two M one, light industrial for the storage of vehicles.
I'm gonna make the motion to deny.
Second.
And there's a reason why.
All right.
If we look at this area, this is not too far from, from Cernas School, okay?
Is it on Ormsby, right?
It's on Ormsby. And so you've got a mix of residential and commercial. And when I hear that it's for, for, it's, to me, it's a mix of residential and commercial. I have a, I have an, I have questions about the safety issue. About the safety. Eh, are we, are we talking about heavy trucks? Are we talking about, what are, what are we talking about?
Yeah, zoom in.
They're already there.
See, that, eh, eh, this is residential. This is not, uh, the use for residential property, obviously.
Mr. Doran?
Are, are those houses on both sides?
No, sir. Um, everything around this property is industrial. The only residential zone is from this house right here, all the way to the end. And this house right here, this is where the owner lives, the owner of this proposed yard.
So what is the, the zoning of all the other properties?
Everything else is light industrial. From here, all the way over here. And same thing on the other side. Everything is light industrial. So that's the reason why we were recommending for it to be approved, just because um, the dominating land use inside this particular, uh, little street is industrial use.
But isn't, I, Maryam.
Mr. Perez?
But isn't there a contradiction here that it seems that this property is already being used for an unintended use? Or un, un, um, oh, unapproved use? I mean, has, have we done any, anything about that or has the city done anything about that?
Some of the, uh, conditions or recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission was the biggest concern was the area behind this property. Everything is R one. And there are residential homes. So one of the things that they recommended is that they leave a buffer, a twenty-foot buffer zone where they would not be allowed to store any vehicles in this little area. Also to, uh, plant some large trees or something that will separate this area from the back of the property.
Joe, I didn't see that carried over to the ordinance, was it?
Yes, it's actually on the conditions. If you look at the backup that you have right there, you're gonna see those conditions right there. Point number one was they're gonna, the law requires that they put a solid wall between residential and industrial use, whi- which would be here in the back. Uh, the, uh, the other recommendation was to let them build a ponding area here in the back to allow even more additional space to separate this use from the residential zone.
Ms. Ellos?
Do we have any constituents, um, uh, asking for this not to be approved?
No, we had a public hearing and we didn't have anybody against this project.
Mr. Perez?
Two questions. Um, one is, when you say storage, um, is it an indefinite amount of time as far as storage of, of vehicles?
According to the applicant, Mrs. Magnolia, um, they're gonna just store, uh, vehicles, right? For only a couple of days and then they'll take them out of there.
How long have those vehicles been there?
I'm sorry?
How long have those vehicles been there?
We didn't start recording the time approximately.
It was around me and I didn't know that I could use this, so I got a citation and that's where I heard all this information and the combination to go through this.
So those vehicles have only been there since me?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Ellos?
What is the, uh, I know, I know, um, these, these vehicles are stored there and then they start, the weeds start growing around them and then you start having, uh, you know, hazardous issues or, or whatnot. Is, is that part of a condition that needs to be met all the time?
That's actually a requirement by law that they need to keep the yard clean. There's an ordinance to regulate overgrowth.
I believe we have a couple of those that we're gonna vote on tonight, correct?
I don't think so.
But I had read another one or two, uh, storages. There is, right? Yes.
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 Mr. Rodriguez?
I understand. I understand completely. Um, uh, but also when, when, some of these vehicles, I know. Uh, 'cause I doubt with some of those, some of these vehicles are stored because they bring them out of the state. Some come out of Dallas, some come out of Houston, some come out of Phoenix, some come out from Kansas, you know? And people purchase these cars to fix them and they bring them to places like this. And then what happens is that once they're here, they give about maybe three grace periods, three days. And then after that they start charging. Um, but I've never seen, because I know one individual who has one like that in San Luisario and, and no car goes over thirty days. But that's just him. So I'm not saying that just because he has it that way, this is something. I'm just saying is that it's a storage, although surrounding is already, you know, commercial. Uh, I understand if it was in the subdivision. You know, um, I would say that, you know, since it's already there, you know. Well, eh, eh, we, we, but we do have to start, like Mr. Navarre said, we have to start someday. So it just depends if we're gonna start today or if we're gonna start tomorrow.
This is another point that I'd like you all to consider. Is that if we're talking about the movement and transport of cars, then there should be enough of an area in case that there is a large vehicle to be able to maneuver in, on the street. Is, I mean, is there enough roadway to be able to handle the, the, the maneuvering of the, of trucking?
Well, the big trucks are on the top and there are containers for, for disposal. I should know because I got my containers from there. So, so, I mean, they, they, they do have the, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's, it's.
Ms. Ellos?
Once, once we change, uh, what, what, um, they're going from residential to light
M one.
Light industrial.
Light industrial. What else? I mean, what if they change their mind? What if they wanna do something else? What else can be built there besides?
Well, eh, eh, it's pretty much everything that falls under that, uh, category. Uh, one of the things that we also need to point out is that this is not an improved or dedicated roadway. This has been the only point of ingress and egress for many years. But it's still not an improved roadway. There is enough room for them to come in and out. But there is no solid surface over this ground. We're still working on the dedication of the right of way.
And I know this because I have a gentleman who never showed up to our appointment. He wanted to start a petition to see if we could dedicate that road and I told him we needed to come to the city. And he never did. But I know that road has, is not dedicated, but, and it has potholes and whatnot. So, um.
Well, is that motion to see?
It is a nice, I mean, it's a nice or, but so is the rest.
I second that motion.
Yours is second? Okay. Let's see where the vote is.
And we have a speaker for this side of, Maryam Cruz?
I think maybe the applicant may want to speak and maybe she didn't sign up, so, um, but maybe not. Um, how was it the planning and zoning when this item came up? And there was a lot that the applicant talked about doing and complying with that she didn't necessarily have to. And I don't know if there's something that you guys wanna ask her to see if she'd be willing to do it. Everything, like you said, down the street is exactly what it's like, that what she's asking for. I don't understand why, if something like talking about cleaning up the city, I mean, what are you gonna do? Put everyone else out of business somehow? Um, those places are gonna continue to be there. So as far as safety goes, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the other issues are apart from, uh, I'm not really understanding why you're denying. It's happening.
I can give you my rationale why.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is that on, on, uh, on face value, it's, eh, those cars should be turned around, right? There's a turnaround to those cars. My concern is that they become, becomes a junkyard. And once it becomes a junkyard, then how are you gonna control that? How are you gonna control the quantity of the cars in the, in the, uh, in the property? Uh, the ISO that, that is, eh, I mean, as it is, that area already has a lot of junkyards. And so, uh, we're just promoting it. That's, that's my, my, my issue and if we don't do it now, when? And, and I know that, and I'm not, and I know the, the lady, eh, I, I don't wanna be an obstacle to her making money off of the property that she has. But the thing is that there are things that we, we're always being, we're always saying, well, I, yo, I'm, yo quiero en Socorro, well, we're promoting that. So. Let's see where the, 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 the vote lays.
Mm-hmm.
Or lie there.
And, and what, what does the ordinance say about this? What, what, are we just making sure we're not gonna break the law or, or be it, you know? Do we have the right? Um, what right do we have?
Cause the question is what right, what does the ordinance say or what right do you, you have?
Both, both.
Which ordinance?
To allowing an R one to a light industrial in this area
There, there's no order?
That already has, obviously, obviously, everyone else is in compliance except this area, this one property? Or we don't know if everyone else is in compliance?
Everyone is in compliance. This is the only property that is not.
Okay.
Okay, so then, all right.
I'm ready.
No, I'm gonna do.
Mr. Perez?
I'm gonna let, I already said my piece about this.
Okay.
I'm gonna rescind my motion. I'm gonna rescind my motion and I'm going to allow my colleagues to develop or generate a, a motion so that we can vote it.
Second.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I, I, uh, right before I say it, I have to say this. And I want people to know, I am for business, period. I understand that what the city needs and we need more business to generate so they can add on to our budget. I had my mind set up, but Mr. Perez brought up a good point. That's how junkyards start because we are giving them the zoning to allow that. And there is a potential, and I've always said this, once we approve a zoning, then you're giving a free rein to build it on whatever that zoning, uh, lets you. And because of that, I'd make the motion to deny.
Is there a second?
To deny.
Once again with a heavy heart, aye.
Mr. Navarres?
Yes.
Grab the mic.
Yes.
Vicupet?
Aye.
Any one calling hello?
Item number fifteen, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of law eight pool subdivision block two at ten eight eight one Alameda Avenue from C two, general commercial two M one, light industrial to be used as a vehicle storage yard. Seven forty-five, public hearing is now open.
Buenas noches, señores. Es, mi nombre es Eduardo Hernandez. Soy el propietario de la, del terreno ese que, del asunto que está ahora en la mesa. Solamente quiero decirles que, y pues ya estoy viendo la problemática con este asunto que acaba de pasar. Este, ese terreno yo lo adquirí con el ahorro de toda mi vida y pues de ahí estoy sosteniendo ahora a mi familia. Tengo algunos años trabajando ahí con el, la, los, guardando los vehículos para ser importados o exportados a Ciudad Pares. Y de pronto pues recibí un requerimiento de tener que hacer un cambio de zoning y ahora estoy aquí. Solo quiero decirles que entiendo la problemática y no pretendo en ningún momento iniciar o poner un yonke ahí que también soy enemigo de ese tipo de situaciones. Este, estaré dispuesto a aceptar lo que ustedes determinen, restricciones, plazos, lo que sea. Yo quiero trabajar, de ahí sostengo a mi familia y solo quiero pedirles pues su comprensión y entiendo también lo que ustedes determinan.
Um, two things, uh, his, Mayor Jesus Ruiz used to, um, wait a whole minute before, but by, from opening the public, public hearing until closing it if no one stood up. Uh, he used to wait a minute and I used to like that because sometimes people walk out. Sometimes people don't know if it's their item and they wait, what was it, maybe ten, fifteen seconds before he got up to speak? Um, so anyway, I'm just saying that maybe, uh, that's something we would wanna try. Or also, as I've been mentioning before, uh, putting up the map so that people know what we're talking about. Uh, especially if they're Spanish speaking and they didn't know that they can request an interpreter because they didn't read the bold first line of the council meeting. Which I didn't know until just now by reading it or that Mr. Arta expressed that there is, uh, that's available. Doesn't, uh, does say it has to be forty-eight hours, so I'm not sure if anyone knew that. Um, that's all I have to say.
Seven forty-eight, public comment is now closed. Item number sixteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of law eight pool subdivision block two at ten eight eighty-one Alameda Avenue from C two, general commercial two M one, light industrial to be used as a vehicle storage yard. Do we have a motion?
Do we have one yet?
A motion.
Motion to deny.
Second.
This property is on Alameda. The reason we're recommending denial is because we received several complaints from, uh, some of the residents who live in the vicinity. This property is currently classified C two. And some of the complaints came from the neighbors who live in the, in the back area. They were concerned about more and more cars being stacked in this property.
So this is also a non-conforming use, or?
Yes. And just because it's, uh, like in the middle of Alameda, it's a nice or, and to respect the, the opinion of the residents who live nearby, we're, we're recommending denial.
Land for sale. Uh, that realtor who came told the commission that she was contacted by Family Dollar Store, who was interested in buying this property. And when they saw, uh, the land use, they were discouraged.
To my point.
Mr. Nevadas?
That's exactly my point. And this is gonna be brutally honest, people. I work for Ryder, Fortune two hundred, not five hundred. In Socorro, we employ a hundred and sixty people versus one. Okay? We need to entice this type of companies to come over to our city. Why is City of El Paso not allowing this type of business? For lack of a better word. Um, and I can tell you, it's a huge embarrassment to me as a resident, to a point where I've considered moving because of this. When are we gonna start cleaning up? I understand. They've been here for long. This is a one-stop shop. But why are we allowing this here? Take it down the street. I say, as El Paso did, take it to Socorro. Why should we allow this? I'm honestly tired of this. And that's the main reason why I'm here. I'm tired of the tire shops, junkyards, the one-stop shop for crap like this. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Renan Rodriguez?
Motion.
To deny.
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombi Yalob?
Yes. Item number seventeen, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of track two N Socorro Grant Block One at eight fifty-nine Anderson Road from A one agricultural to M one light industrial to be used as a personal storage.
Uh, motion to deny based on... Oh, excuse me.
Eight oh three, public hearing is now open. Eight fifty-four, public hearing is now closed. Item number eighteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of track two N Socorro Grant Block One at eight fifty-nine Anderson Road from A one agricultural to M one light industrial to be used as a personal storage.
Uh, at this mo- at this time, I'd like to make a motion to deny based on staff and board recommendations.
Second.
Is there a presentation? Real quick, I just wanna, I have a question. All right, um, I know that we've have a motion to deny, it's on the table. But what does personal storage mean? And why would it require a, uh, a, a light, what was it?
It was industrial.
Uh, uh, to light industrial?
Mm-hmm.
Ch- a la- a change to light industrial?
The applicant, when he met with us, there was a very big discussion about what a personal storage would be. Uh, we detected a junkyard. And a bunch of, uh, like these, uh, semi trucks, like the box.
The trailers.
They're just stored. And he calls this a personal storage. I find it hard to believe that he's not gonna be doing any mechanic work. He did say that he won't be doing any mechanic work. However, the times that we've, uh, passed by, we see trucks that are dismantled. And, uh, these, whatever they're storing here, they look like they're dilapidated. They don't look in a, like, in a good condition.
Mr. Nevadas?
What's that black, those black little mounds there, yeah?
It's just, uh, it looks like dirt that they're just, uh, piling up. But if you look at this property from Nevadas, there's a dilapidated building here. It looks like it hasn't been taken care of for a long time. This is the only personal storage that we found on the property. They, what you see here on the image, they probably have about ten of these lined up.
Now?
Yes. And then also, they have about five trucks on this side, just parked. One of them looks like it's dismantled.
Ms. Elewos?
So, once, uh, depending on what happens, and let's say that, uh, the recommendation is adopted, they have to remove, or they have to appeal, or they have the right to appeal?
If you give them the zoning, all this would be allowed.
But if, if you, if you don't?
If you, if you don't approve it, they're gonna have to remove all this and clean up the property. Right now, there's a pending, uh, code violation because code enforcers were out there cleaning up. And they issued a notice to the property owner. That's why they came into our office to apply for a zoning change.
And it says here, they're not, they do not live in El Paso, the, the owner does not live on the property?
He doesn't live there, that's why he wants to use the property just for storage. Uh, when I called him earlier to remind him about the meeting today, he said he was out of town. And he was gonna send a representative, I don't know if he's here.
Mr. Nevadas?
That sounds to me like a personal landfill, not storage.
I believe he's a truck driver, and he wasn't in Laredo right now.
Then he oughta consider and build a house there and see if he likes the view.
All right. Renan Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombi Yalob?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Um, Mayor, this time, could we please move up item number twenty-eight? The planning and zoning item.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Renan Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombi Yalob?
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight, discussion on action and approval for the planning and zoning commissioners' request to have workshops to identify and recommend regulatory changes.
Again, Michael Medina, the city planner. Part of, uh, the workup in, in our relationship with the commissioners for planning and zoning is that I started to introduce holistic training in terms of what planning is in relationship to ordinances, uh, subdivision, transportation, essentially everything. So as we are going through the exercise of workshops, and I think we had about three of them, there was an interest by the commissioners to, uh, advocate for identifying gaps and bringing those gaps forward to the body for recommendations for changes in zoning and subdivision and land use and et cetera. So if you all would recognize the commissioner, the chair, Mr. Lopez is here, uh, to speak on behalf of the commissioners.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council. My name's Daniel Lopez with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, uh, like Mr. Medina mentioned, we started a workshop, that, uh, takes place about sometimes half an hour, an hour before our, uh, regular meeting. Uh, it's open to the public and where we just discuss ideas, um, and issues that we have with our current zoning and not only that, but also with the vision of, of the, the city, uh, considering that we've, that we have a comprehensive, uh, comprehensive plan that's, that was adopted several years ago. And we look at that and, um, also just going through some of the cases, uh, you know, like with the, especially the M one and, and all that stuff and, and how, how it, how we, we can approach that and, and, uh, just a general approach, uh, to, to zoning. Uh, so we'd like for the council to give us your consideration and support on this, and like I said, it's open to the public. There's only so many issues that we've come across and that we know that are important. I'll give you one example. There's, uh, in residential, there's basically two categories that are more prominent, R one, which is single family, and R two, which is everything else. You know, so you either have a single-family home, or you have in R one or in R two, you're gonna have a duplex, or, I don't know, a hundred-unit apartment in one category. And it, it, things like that just, I think, need to be addressed. And we're not really looking to overhaul anything, I think we're just looking to address and, and make amendments and re- recommendations to city council. So, uh, anyway, so again, we like your support on, on these.
Mr. Perez?
I for one am all for the idea because we're operating under a set of standards that were maybe okay, not necessarily great for nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-five. And so I think that we need to evolve as a city. And I think that's part of it, is to define how we're going to grow. I think right now, we're, it's very vague in terms of the, what we have as ordinances and those kinds of things. And to your point, I think that it is beneficial for the city to start looking at it, uh, what we have. And then if we have to, it's like, like, uh, an old, uh, since it's Christmas time. You know, you have your Christmas tree, and you have a lot of, you have all these ornaments on your Christmas tree. And some ornaments are n- not good anymore, and so you take them off, you know, and, and I would not be opposed of taking off some of the stuff if it's not beneficial to the city. Let's remove it and then rework it. I, and so I think that would be great.
Right, and, and there are some, I mean, we've looked at it, there's things that just work, and there's no reason to really touch that, but there's others that, I'll tell you, well, I'll go back to R two. In R two, we've had to create, when we approved, we've had to create a lot of conditions that just really don't need to be there if we just had a different category that approved that. And so, y- yeah, that's, that's one of them, and we've been looking at that, Mr. Medina has kinda guided us in, in the right direction. We've looked at other, and we're gonna look at other cases, uh, in other, other cities of, of zoning and see if we can come up with something that works, something that doesn't, um, I guess, uh, deviate from what Socorro is. You know, we're not El Paso, we're Socorro, we're different. There's a different character to the city, and I think we need to preserve that, and I think we can do it through zoning. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And, and, and you know what, I, I have an issue. I, I have an issue because, um, you, you just finished saying it about maybe ten seconds ago, that you guys have to put some, uh, or make some recommendations, but what I would really like for you guys to do is go out and try to pinpoint what needs to be changed. Because I don't like it that you guys are amending or changing something that is already set. So you guys don't really should have the authority to change something when we, the board, already agreed that those are our rules and policies and procedures. Okay? First of all, so what I would really love for you guys to really do is really go out there and look at one section and just dissect it and say, you know what? This is what we should allow, this is what we shouldn't allow, this is, and, and then give us your feedback. Because we're more than happy to do it, because I know that it's a very difficult job to be a commissioner on any of our commissions. Because it's your time. And I value your time. And I think that you will do a great service if you would go out there and really look at them, dissect them, and say, you know what? We should not even allow leeways, we should say, hey, you know, these shouldn't be there. Let's take them out, and then these we should add on, and then just give us your presentation on, on anything you have. I don't, and, and one of the things that I would actually add is, don't wait to do ten or five at the time. As soon as you, you start digging in, bring them to us. Because the faster you do it, the faster it would be able for us to make a decision on them. So, so it'll, it'll move us faster to where the image should be of Socorro. And, and, and like I said, one more time, it's very difficult on your position. Thank you for your service. But I just have that to say.
Yeah, no, and, and we are looking at short-term goals and long-term goals, so we are applying both. And just to let you know that Mr. Berkelbach go- shows up to our meetings, so we, whatever we approve or with conditions, it, it doesn't, you know, it's not something we make up, we, he's always there, you know, making sure that we don't deviate from, from what's allowed in the ordinances.
That was gonna be my question, you know, if you're being supervised, or, or is the attorney?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Is it okay?
No.
All right.
So is there a motion?
We need a motion.
Motion to, uh, approve the, uh, workshops to be able to make regulatory recommendations.
Second.
Maryam Cruz is our speaker on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you're approving it, probably. I'm just a little annoyed with the fact that about six months ago, I wasn't here, but I saw the meeting online. And I remember Mr. Rodriguez specifically being very passionate about some of the things in the ordinances that needed to be changed because the commissioners from the Planning and Zoning Commission came, I don't know if you remember that. There's about four or five of them here. And they were talking about all these issues that were occurring. And back then, you asked them, these are the things that we need to change, or you didn't ask them specifically and tell them what they needed to change, but you told them there's change that needs to be done. Mr. Rodriguez listed off a bunch of things. Some of the things that come to my mind are traffic studies, parks, the R twos and the R ones that definitely need to be approved, uh, updated. And I have the sense of urgency because of all of the, um, new subdivisions that are coming in, that have already come in, and that are yet to come in. I have a sense of urgency as to why none, no, no ordinance from the planning and zoning has been updated already. It's frustrating to me, 'cause that's six months, that something probably could've already come out. That's part of another reason why I've been wanting to get on the Planning and Zoning Commission, is because I know that that's something that I would've been pushing. Um, anyway, um, yeah, it's great, we're taking a step forward. But it's probably a step that should've happened five, six months ago, that guidance. And ordinances should've already come up. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Um, just to answer your question, the only reason why, I, I understand, because I'm a very, very strong individual and says that we need to change ordinances, I've always said that. But the, the difficult thing is that we had a, a turnaround in our, our, our directors. So that's why what they were building on just went away. Now we have somebody else took his position, and now that's what he's working on. So we are working on it. Like I said, I hate all the red tape that, that, that we faced, but unfortunately, it's something that we have to address. But we are working on them. And that's why we hired Mr. Medina, and that's what he's doing.
Ms. Elewos?
My, my, my question is, is it cost-effective to be changing one at a time, or have a stack at a time?
So for your all's information is that planning and zoning have identified several items. So there's things that were gonna come with the commissioners, for example, rock walls. So believe it or not, rock walls, as they pertain to, uh, ponding areas are not required. Uh, I mean, that's a serious safety concern. So that's one of the items that we have, for example, is to amend that. The R one, the R two, and things that are a little bit more sophisticated will take more time. Uh, in this coming January, we're actually bringing master plan, uh, by way of an ordinance. So if you have a subdivision coming in, depending upon lot size or acreage, you're gonna be required to comply with master planning. That will also come with it, um, an ordinance that already allows it for a letter of credit. We need to make sure that as the subdivisions are being developed, that there's money to complete them. So, so the short answer is that, as Mr. Lopez said, is that we have short-term goals, and then we have long-term goals. So with those long-term goals, we'll come back and probably say that we have to have a new comprehensive plan to have, uh, the entire public involved in that. But we have all of them, so meet them short and long.
So, but, and thank you. Is it cost-effective? Or i- is it the same cost to do one at a time versus we have a stack of fifteen, um, items that need to be? How, is there a cost to all this?
Obviously, there's a, there's a cost to everything, the, the great thing is that you have good staff to accomplish that. We are not seeking the services of a consultant or an engineer
Okay.
to do these things. I think that in-house, we can do them. Again, if things become a little bit more sophisticated that require other professional services, certainly we'll come back to the body.
Thank you.
I think, in terms of, I'm thinking, I'm sorry. In terms of cost, I think that, um, it depends on the issue that they're, that they're looking at. To your point, some things will be more technical than others will requi- that will require more time to dissect and research and, and then come up with a, maybe look at a comparable city and see how they, how they address it, those kinds of things. And so i- in terms of, of, of real cost, there is, I guess, in time and effort and salary, I mean, whoever is, is, is assigned to it. But by the same token, I, I think that we've always talked about, and you all brought it up, about that Citizens College, Citizens University. And I think this is, that, that falls right in line with that, that we're educating the, we're giving the, the commissioners technical, uh, expertise, or, or providing them technical information that will help us, uh, or will inform us on making decisions. And so I think it's an investment all the way around. So.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And, and also, just to, just to add to it is that I had brought up an agenda item that we all approved. And that is to, anything further would have rock walls on all of our, our, um, our, uh, ponding areas. So, I mean, this is something that we already addressed. And it goes back to what our constituents don't understand is that because a director leaves, that institutional knowledge leaves with him. So then we have to pick up the pieces for another individual to come in and start from scratch. So that's what we're having, and that's what we're facing. And like I said, you know, we don't want people to lose faith in us, we don't want nobody to lose faith in our, in our employees because they're here for us, and they will get it done. And that's what we've done, we, that's something that we already approved. Of course, you know, we have to, it takes time to write, uh, the ordinances, to bring them, to, 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 uh, put them in, um, in, in the media so that people are aware that we're gonna amend our ordinances and stuff like that, so it takes time. But I just want to reassure you that we already approved some of these. Staff sees that there's some other things that need to be added, so it takes time. Nothing is perfect. Like I said, I may have a good idea, but then Mr. Perez might have a great idea, and then Mr. Uh, Duran may have another great idea that adds to it. And you want the best possible outcome. So it takes a little bit of time, and I know it's frustrating, but we will get it done.
Mr. Darte?
And just to add to the question that you had, I, I think that, like Mr. Rodriguez was saying, there's a process. So one of, you know, our staff writes the ordinance, then it goes for review to the attorney, then we have to publicate.
And that's my question, right there.
Right, so when, when, once it's written and it goes to the attorney, then at that point, we start re- writing another ordinance. Right, but some a little bit need a little bit more time, plus there's other duties that kind of get us away from that, and then we come, come back. And if we hold off and just put fifteen of them together, well, then it's, the process is gonna take a lot longer. Right? But because the, the process, you, you start one, and you kind of take it through the process, and then we begin the other one.
And that's, 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 that's exactly where maybe I should direct it to, yeah. 'Cause I know there is a cost, and I don't know if there's a bulk when you, if you put it in the paper, you know, price. And, and so, just, and every penny counts, so that, that's why I was saying, if we're doing it individually and it's costing us two hundred and fifty-five versus we put ten and it costs a thousand for the whole ten, you know? That's what I'm saying, the cost of it.
I guess, if one of the mechanisms that you wanna direct is to put a timeframe on it, to come back within thirty, sixty, ninety days, I, I, that's better for me to be quite honest with you, because I don't think that we should have a rolling, you know, conversation about this. So if we have a timeline and the workshops are geared to meet that timeframe, I think, I certainly would recommend that. So that we don't have a rolling cost.
Well, and it's, okay, I got it. Renan Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombi Yalob?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Going back to item number nineteen, discussion on action on approving the unauthorized financial reports for October two thousand eighteen. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Renan Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombi Yalob?
Yes.
Item number twenty, discussion on action to authorize the City of Socorro to submit a grant application to the El Paso Metropolitan Organization Federal Transportation Agency's FFY two thousand eighteen and FFY two thousand nineteen, Section fifty-three-ten program to offset the cost of operational support and procurement of an additional ADA vehicle. The city's match contribution for FFY two thousand eighteen is fifty thousand seven hundred and thirty-six from the existing fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen recreation centers budget. The city's match contribution for FFY two thousand nineteen is also fifty thousand seven hundred and thirty-six from the projected recreation centers budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Um, we request your authorization to submit two grant applications. Um, this year, the MPO has put out the call for federal fiscal year twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, so we do have to submit two applications. Um, the city has received funding through the fifty-three te- ten program for procurement of ADA vehicles for the Rio Vista Transportation Program. Um, just a little background, the Rio Vista Transportation Program does provide free curbside pickup and drop-off services to seniors and people with disabilities, um, or mobility issues in the City of Socorro. In two thousand eighteen, the transportation program provided over two thousand five hundred trips at no cost to residents. We are requesting funding for operational support to hire two dedicated transit operators to expand our services. Um, we're also requesting an additional ADA vehicle. Our match is coming from our existing recreation centers budget. Right now, all of the operational support is provided by our recreation, um, centers department. Our rec leaders are drivers, our rec leaders are everything. The match is the same for the FY twenty nineteen. We will be requesting transportation development credits to cover a portion of our match for capital, uh, requests, which is a ADA vehicle. Do you have any questions?
Now, I won't be being funny. Can we put wire wheel covers, uh, through the truce spokes, the, on the, on the vehicle chrome?
I know some, somebody requested wifi on the vehicles and...
I'm just, chrome always makes it look nice. And I'm kidding.
We can try.
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Yes.
Victor Perez? Aye.
Ivan Colombi Yalob?
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, discussion on action to direct city attorney to assess the feasibility of establishing an arms-length nonprofit five oh one C three organization to solicit fundraisers, collect, and use donations, gifts, endowments, and bequests from individual donors, foundations, and private corporations to support and further the City of Socorro's mission to serve the needs of Socorro residents.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
So this is an item for discussion and action to assess the feasibility of a nonprofit organization. These are called arms-length nonprofit organizations, otherwise known as private-public partnerships. Um, local governments here in the County of El Paso have already used nonprofits as a mechanism to further the city's, uh, mission. Um, the nonprofit would be a separate entity from the City of Socorro, but the board can be made up of city staff, elected officials, but more importantly, of community leaders and, uh, private business owners. The reason for this request, um, is because state and, and federal funding is limited. The reason for this request, um, is because state and, and federal funding is limited. As you know, it is a highly competitive process and there are a lot of strings attached when you request funding from state or federal sources. Um, one of the, our biggest hurdles is a match. As an example, there is a FEMA grant, um, solicitation out right now, uh, for pre-disaster mitigation. Those grants usually, uh, require a twenty percent match and when we're talking about projects that are ten million dollars, um, our city just sometimes cannot handle that two million dollar that we need to contribute. Um, so other, uh, organizations in the City of El Paso and the Town of Anthony have already set up these kinds of, uh, organizations. As an example, um, you, these organizations can get, uh, funding from private sources, including citizens. We can accept cash donations. The organization would, uh, be able to accept, um, contributions from private foundations, from businesses. It's more of a crowd, what they call crowdsourcing, uh, diverse, uh, opportunity. As an example, the Hunt Fa- Hunt Family Foundation only contributes to nonprofit organizations. In two thousand sixteen, they made contributions, uh, upwards of thirty-one million dollars. Eighteen of those projects happened here in the Paso del Norte region. Um, one of them is the El Paso Museum of History. They received a five hundred thousand dollar matching grant. Um, the El Paso Museum of History Foundation is the arms-length organization, nonprofit organization of the El Paso Museum of History. The El Paso Museum of History is city-operated. It's, it's, um, it's funded, uh, through city dollars, City of El Paso dollars. And so through these kind of private, uh, private-public partnerships, um, we can further a lot of the city's, um, projects and goals. In your backup, I did include a list of nonprofit organizations that exist to further local government's missions. These include the Friends of El Paso Public Library and Bookstore. They stimulate and receive gifts, endowments, and requests for the benefit of the main library. I know that you guys have maybe seen the Friends of the Library book sales that they have. Um, another one is the El Paso Police Foundation. They exist to further the mission of the El Paso Police Department. Another one is the El Paso Museum of Art Foundation. They further the El Paso Museum of Art, um, which is also a city-funded museum. It's important to note that over fifteen percent of its financial support comes from the foundation, okay? So they do get a, quite a bit of, uh, private investments. Another one is the El Paso Museum of History Foundation, the El Paso, El Paso Animal Shelter Foundation. Even Anthony, Texas has their police foundation and food pantry. I also included a list of tax filings per year for some of the nonprofit organizations listed. Um, and depending on how aggressive these, uh, nonprofit organizations, um, conduct their fundraising activities, you can get, uh, private investments that are really small or really big, depending on how you structure your nonprofit foundation or your nonprofit organization. Um, the Friends of El Paso Library received five thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars in two thousand eleven. The El Paso Police Foundation, uh, reported revenues of thirty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, the Museum of Art Foundation reported four hundred and twelve thousand dollars in private investments. And the last thing that I included was an actual email from the Hunt Family Foundation where they advised me to partner with a nonprofit in order to receive their funds. Um, I would like to close with some of the benefits for a nonprofit foundation. In, uh, in a side, besides giving us access to private dollars from private businesses and foundations, we can fundraise, um, we can accept cash donations. The foundation would be able to expand the city's mission through programs and initiatives that we just cannot finance through our municipal budget. Because it doesn't, um, require the formation of a board and bylaws, there would be an increased engagement in, in community, um, involvement in city, in the city's mission and support. The board can be made up of community members, youth, leaders, business owners. Um, it would also give a voice back to the community because community members would be directly involved in decisions that impact their community. Um, and lastly, it would give us an opportunity to tackle a broad range of projects, depending on how we structure the nonprofit foundation. Um, this can include capital projects such as parks improvements, biking and walking trails, infrastructure improvements, sidewalks, um, citywide linear, uh, trail system, promoting the arts and culture, promoting or, um, I guess, um, funding our historical preservation projects that, that are expensive, as you know. And that's it. If y'all have any questions?
Mr. Perez?
Yes, sir.
Who provides the financial oversight?
Uh, this would be a completely separate entity, so they do have to report, um, like you saw in the tax filings. Um, they would have their own bylaws, their own board, and...
So then, I, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt. So that, that means that, uh, someone would have to be hired by this body to be able to do the financial, I'm, 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 I'm thinking about the, the, um, bookkeeping.
Correct. It, it, it depends on, on the structure of the nonprofit. There are nonprofits that, uh, have an accountant on their board. Uh, there's nonprofits that have an accountant as a volunteer. There's nonprofits that have the budget to hire, um, a CPA. So it would depend. I, I can't...
Because, uh, I know that, and I can relate to the school systems, like, and this is not maybe the, a good comparison, but like a booster club. A booster club, it has, it is, it, it's own body. But as far as the money that is recouped or, or whatever they get, they have in, as far as money is concerned, it's under a, usually, or it was before, uh, under the, the district, but in a separate account specifically, uh, designated for those kinds of activities. So I'm not sure if, if we could do something like that. Because un- unfortunately, it's very easy to lose track of, of funding that way. And so I, I would recommend, I, I agree with the idea, but to have the city, whenever allowable, have them, uh, be the, the umbrella for all things financial, if possible.
Right. Um, so, I'm, I guess that would be the, something that our attorneys can consider and give us a little bit more guidance on.
To answer your question, Mr. Perez, it's, I mean, the party, the entity, the person that have direct control to affect financial oversight is the board. That's, that's their mission in life.
Okay. But they would be under the auspices of the city, correct? Or they would be completely separate?
Well, I mean, you had it under the board members' arm. Not necessarily under the auspices, it's an independent organization. But its, its mission is to promote the city's mission.
And it could be made out of staff, right? And then we build the structure.
Or make some staff, man, private.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Would this have any effect on our future going forward with the EDC? Would it be different or...
Um, eh, so the nonprofit can also further economic development, uh, goals or projects.
We structure it that way.
Correct. It depends on what the, the non- nonprofit, the nonprofit's mission and what it's, it's structured to tackle.
Because this would be a five oh one C three, right?
Five oh one C three, that's right.
And your CDCs, your CDCs are, are, but they also are five oh one C three.
Yes, but...
But they have a different function.
We, we, yes.
They could have them...
That, that's what I was trying to say is, depending on how we structure it, we can have it, but it, it really won't because, eh, the EDC, then we can put our own members, not all of us, but one at least, and then comprised by other people. That we will have an oversight on. But on this one, we really wouldn't because the board is the one that, that makes...
I, I could see this body working on the quality of life issues, the cultural aspect of the city, developing all those things. The CDC or the EDC, however you wanna call it, would be more of an infrastructure-type, uh, function.
Yeah, so I mean, that's what I was asking, if it would ha- if it would affect it in any, you know, way. But no, I, I, I don't think so. I, I guess, you know, this is great. This is great because, like I said, you know, um, it takes a lot of money, um, for, for improvement. It really does, especially with our Baraceros buildings and stuff. I mean, uh, and, and that's something that we need to, to address, to beautify, so that, you know, we don't lose that, uh, history here in Socorro. And, and this is something great that, that, you know, it's about time, so.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, Mayor Cruz?
I wanna ten, I wanna take ten seconds, uh, to thank Ms. Valdez. Um, your presentations are always on point. And I appreciated the backup, uh, this time, cause that, that was a lot of, uh, good information. Um, so thank you. I reviewed, uh, the backup. I don't have it in front of me, but I reviewed it on Monday night and, um, I was very thankful to see, um, examples, local examples. And one of the reasons, it seems like the letter at the end was really the reason that maybe started making you think about it, was because of that foundation not giving money out to the cities directly. Uh, my only concern is who's gonna pick the board members? If the director of the nonprofit's gonna pick the board members, uh, who picks the director? If the director's gonna, if it's gonna be vice versa, then who's gonna be in charge of who? I understand that maybe our city council right now, um, are great people. I like all of you. Um, but we have had in the past, um, concerns about corruption, not only in our elected officials, but our city staff. And so my concern is, are we really gonna be separate or is this just gonna be a personal piggy bank for the city? You know, because it's gonna be comprised of just city members, maybe just in the, even if it is just in the beginning. Uh, so that's my concern, is, is let's not ruin it from the get-go. Let's make it transparent. Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
I think all depends on, on the way we structure the organization, the bylaws that are in place and what we, what is agreed upon.
Correct.
And then what the law also allows, because they have to function within, uh, the parameters of the five oh one C three status, because, and that's a tricky situation. If we, if it's not followed, it's very easy to lose.
Right. And, and I would advocate for the inclusion of community members on the board and private businesses because, um, just as a trend, projects that are community-led and community, um, that have the backing of the community are more likely to be funded. And that, um, includes for whether we apply for funding as a city and we have the ba- backing of the foundation, which is made up of community members, that would make our applications stronger. Um, and if an application goes in through the five oh one C three, just knowing that they're backed by community leaders and that their voices are heard, that also makes an application stronger. And it would provide the oversight, um, that, that you're talking about, that it's not just made up of city staff or city officials, that it includes our community members so that they can be a part of the process and understand that it's a transparent, um, you know, process.
Mr. Darte?
And, and the agenda item is to provide us, the city attorney, to assess the feasibility at an arms-length. So we really don't have the specifics right now. What we're asking council is to give us the authority to go to the attorney and figure out how we can do this.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, update on Texas CDBG two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Community Development Fund Award to the City of Socorro in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Contract number seven twenty-one eighty-four sixty and deficiencies pending on previous Texas CDBG two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen Community Development Fund contract for the Sparks Arroyo Improvement Project, contract number seven twenty-one fifty-four seventy-nine.
So this is an update on our CDBG, um, projects and applications. So the city was awarded funding through, for the Sparks Arroyo project through the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen CDBG fund by the Texas Department of Agriculture. The Texas Department of Agriculture, uh, they're the entity that provides our compliance and monitoring reviews for all of our projects. Um, although this project and the engineering and the construction of this project have already been completing, completed, the administration portion of this project has not. As per TDA guidelines, each grant recipient must establish a local administrative structure. Um, and that includes record keeping and documentation that we followed all of the federal and state laws according to program requirements. Um, the city has two choices. Whenever we get CDBG funds through TDA, we can either administer the grant in-house, that means by city staff, city-paid staff, or we have the option to, um, procure a third-party consultant. The contract for administrative, uh, administration services for CDBG two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen funds was awarded to Border Community Development Consultants during the May fifth, two thousand sixteen council meeting. And, um, the expenditures for those administrative services have been forty-six thousand five hundred dollars for, for that grant. Um, as a contract administrator, Border CDC is responsible for project management, financial management, environmental review, construction management, ensuring fair housing, uh, and equal opportunity policies are fo- followed and documented. And lastly, audit and close-out procedures. So right now, we're in that close-out and audit procedure process. So if you look in your backup, we did receive a notification from the Texas Department of Agriculture on January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, requesting a monitor desk review. This happens at the end of every CDBG grant. They basically ask us to mail them all of our documents regarding to that grant to make sure that we followed all the required, uh, laws. Um, they gave us a deadline of February sixth, two thousand eighteen. On February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, they sent a second notice, uh, demand notice, um, explaining that we did not provide the required documentation and that our deadline was extended until March ninth. Um, on February ninth, they sent us another email explaining that a hold was placed, placed on all draws and will remain on hold until all of the records have been received. And lastly, uh, well, not lastly, on October twenty-third, we received another notification, this time telling us that we received funding through the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen grant for, um, flood and drainage improvement in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is great. That means we got funded again. However, on October twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, um, they gave us what is referred to as a ninety-day notice. Um, this is explaining that all of the issues pending on the previous contract had to be, um, cured and closed out within ninety days in order to receive the new grant funds, okay? So ninety days from the award letter would be, um, January twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. I'm correct. Lastly, the, the last thing I would like to point out is the potential for, um, disallowed costs based on our procurement of administrative services. So when this grant, uh, was submitted as an application, it was submitted by Border CDC. So this consultant firm worked on the grant application and submitted it to TDA. As per TDA guidelines, um, whenever that would be considered, the, the consultant that prepares a grant application cannot also bid for administrative services for that if that grant gets funded. And so, um, if you look in your backup, that is what it says on page ten, is if a grant administrator has been involved with discussions or decisions regarding a grant application prior to the procurement process for administrative services, that firm may not be selected as a grant administrator. So, um, Borders, we, we did receive the grant and Border CDC bid for this, um, for this grant as a, as an administrator, um, and they were awarded the, the administrative contract. So that poses a potential, uh, conflict of interest and there, they have advised us that there's a potential that those costs, those forty-six thousand dollars wo- would be disallowed. What disallowed means is that we would either give the money back for the, for those costs, for those administrative costs, or we can choose to not participate in the CDBG program for five years. So at this point, it's, I, I should note that this is only the, I'm only informing, informing you of the potential. Um, this has not been a formal notice yet.
Correct. And just to add to that, we are working with legal counsel to, uh, make Border CDC comply or provide us the money to pay back the, the funding.
Mr. Perez?
Okay, I've got a few issues with that. One is that the Border City CDC, I'm sure is an experienced contractor. They should have known that they couldn't have applied for the administrative services part, right?
Correct. So...
So that's one. Two, um, in terms, in, in terms of the administrative... in terms, in, in terms of the administrative services that they rendered, it seems like that they were lacking, because obviously they haven't submitted anything to the state. So, then I think that on, on two issues, one is the fact that, that we weren't, they, they went in knowing that they couldn't provide the services, one. Two, once they were contracted for those services, they didn't perform to the standards of the contract.
Correct, so there's a breach of contract, and that's what we're working with legal to make sure that we, I mean, right now, we're working on a letter to send out to Border CDC as a notice of intent. Because it is a breach of contract.
And then one last thing, can we, can we, um, in the future, and I don't know, this is just part of the discussion, uh, maybe look into like the Rio Grande Council Governments, uh, doing the administration work for us?
Yes, they, they can provide the administrative services. Um, we can also do the administration in-house, uh, to what they call force account.
Only because I used to work with them for long.
Yeah, and, and, yeah. And really, um, the, the process, just so you all know, is that uh, whenever we procure an administrator, we must, uh, show evidence of having contacted at least three firms inviting them to, to bid. Um, and that just, that's just to increase fairness in the process, in the procurement process.
Alright, thank you.
And, and what is the, I'm sorry. Mr. Loz? What is the amount?
For administrative services, forty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
So, that, that means that the city might be liable to pay that back in order for us not to lose for five years and, and further funding, right? Because we've just been awarded the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, if, if for whatever reason we can't provide the documentation that is being requested of Border CDC, our recommendation is probably gonna come back and say, we're gonna have to pay up the money and then go after Border CDC for the funding? Right? So, we can get refunded, but we do not wanna lose out for five years and not be, be, being able to apply for these type of grants.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have a speaker, Mary Cruz?
Moving on to item number twenty-four, discussion and action on the proposed conditional use permit for a mechanic shop on tract eleven, block seven, Socorro Grant at ninety-nine forty-five Alameda Avenue.
Motion to deny based on staff and commission recommendation.
Second.
In the last meeting when we presented this, uh, conditional use permit request, it was mentioned that there were some violations that were pending that still need to be addressed. Brenda, she's a representative for this applicant. She stated that some of the violations were already taken care of. So, we were directed to go follow up and make sure that they were. Um, we stopped by the property on Friday and we noticed that some of the violations were not taken care of yet. Uh, they did cover up a sewer that collapsed, or a septic tank, I'm sorry. The septic tank collapsed. So, they hired a contractor to cover it up. They gave me a copy of the, of the agreement, the letter that they received. So, we were asking for a copy of the, of the certificate from the county showing that it was inspected and approved by the county. We received a certificate, but it doesn't pertain to that address. Uh, right now, this afternoon, I was informed by Ms. Brenda again that they did receive a certificate showing that the septic tank was approved by the county. But up to this date, or up, up to this point, we still don't have that certificate here with us. In addition to the violations that were mentioned before, we found some new violations in the property. There's still a mechanic working. This is a area where they covered up the septic tank that was collapsed. So, now, they, they have all these cars that are, uh, we spoke to the mechanic and he said that he's working on at least eight of them. The ordinance, even if the conditional, uh, use permit is approved, the maximum amount of cars it can have is five. Uh, the other thing that we found is, there's, the mechanic is, there's oil spills in the soil where they're doing the mechanic work. The other violation is that all this mechanic work is supposed to be done inside an enclosed building. They're doing the work in here because there's no room in the, in the shop, because they already have two vehicles inside. There's still no business registration. And there's even, uh, auto parts that seem to be piled in the back of the building. Tires. And this is where they're working in, inside the, the building that is not equipped to be used for a mechanic shop.
Mr. DeRazas, could you do a, a street view to see exact, to, to see exactly where it's, where it, uh?
Where it's located.
It's in front of Nevades.
Is it near PvP Printing and?
Yes.
And the El Cruella restaurant and all that?
No, no.
PvP photography.
So, this is Nevades right here, this is where the print shop is. And this is the property who, the owner is requesting a conditional use permit for the mechanic shop. This is a mechanic shop. And there's still no solid surface. They just have, uh, screening. There's also electrical issues, wires that are sticking out from the ground. And according to the mechanic that we spoke to, those wires pertain to a lift that they're gonna install outside the building.
Which has, which has to be inside a building, correct?
It has to be inside a building, and this is where they're doing their mechanic operations. Uh, Brenda is back here, yes.
Good evening. Um, we have been waiting for the letter from him, I'm sorry, I'm a little sick, um, to tell us what we need to correct, but he has not taken as a letter, ever. And it's already been twice, he tells me he's gonna take me to the next day and he never brings it to us. So, we can fix all that. Whatever I kind of picked, when he said that it was wrong, we're kind of fixing it. But he hasn't really taken as a letter where it says, you need to fix this because of this, nothing.
But at this point, ma'am?
Mr. Perez?
But at this point, if I understood correctly, this, this, this is a non-conforming use of the property. So, your client is undertaking a business that should not be there to begin with. And so, whether Mr. DeRazas has delivered a letter or not, that business shouldn't even exist.
That business has been there for more than two years. So, she took over, she bought the house and she took over, she used to lease it to somebody else. So, the violations that are there, they're way before, they're not even hers. And she has a lease agreement where she had, I released that place. So, when she took over the mechanic shop, she wants to do the things right, so she came and tried to get the permit. And we're trying to fix it, so everything can be right.
So, we went to this property a couple of times. Uh, it's true, we haven't given them a letter, but we did a walkthrough with the mechanic and we told him piece by piece, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong. He said he was gonna take care of it before we presented a, an update to you. So, on Friday, when we went, we still found the same thing and we found new things that were going on. Uh, one of the things that he was advised since the last time that he was contacted, he was given a citation since May, he was ordered to stop operations until he obtained a conditional use permit. And it hasn't happened.
Mr. Perez?
So, then, very quickly, for my own clarification, so then this portion of the property is rented out currently?
Yes.
It's?
No, she owns already the property, she used to rent the mechanic shop.
So, then the mechanic?
So, that, that violation that he has, it was from the other, the past person that was there.
How, okay, so then how long, when, when was the property sold then?
No, no, it was.
The mechanic that we spoke to said that he was borrowing the place that, he told us that one of his friends told him that he doesn't need a permission from the city. He, that he can start operating and then he can come back later to get the permission. So, we told him that it's the other way around, he has to get the permit first before he can start, start operating.
Mr. Loz? That citation that you have there is addressed to whom?
Jose Olivas.
Jose Olivas is the gentleman that was there prior to now?
Yes.
And the, who is the owner of this property?
Nina Herrera.
Okay. And, and she's been the owner of this property for how long?
Three years.
Three years. Any, any citations in the past three years? I'm sorry.
This is the only citation that we have in file for the, for that property.
And what day was that, that done?
The original notice of violation was given in April tenth. Code enforcement sent out a final notice April twenty-seventh. And then the citation was issued May eighth.
All of two thousand eight?
Yes.
And he, okay, and so he's no longer there and who is there now?
We are.
How long have you been there?
Two months ago.
Two months?
Since we started doing the,
And two months, or a few weeks ago, you were approached by the city and you were requested uh, to do a whole bunch of repairs in verbally and not in writing?
Yes.
Do we not give them in writing? I'm sorry.
No, no, that she's saying that she didn't, didn't give us anything in writing.
Mr. Joe, do we not issue them in writing?
We didn't, the only thing that we gave them in writing is that they need to stop oper, uh, mechanic operations until they obtain a business registration.
And so, and that's, and then they can come in and get everything they need in writing?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
But that one is not ours, the one that he's showing.
No, I completely understand, but he, they were there?
No.
No, it, it, it was, even, even if it was a previous owner, even if it was a totally different person, the land use is still continuous. They haven't sto, uh, stopped operations since they were ordered in the first place.
So, so the issue is, is the person that's operating right now needs to speak to the owner and you're speaking directly to the owner about the violations of that property?
No, we spoke to the mechanic, um, because he's the one who was gonna prepare or make the provisions for him to operate. That's why we, we met with a mechanic and we pointed out every single thing, one by one.
But when you're the owner, you're, you're responsible for no matter what.
Of course.
Exact, that, that's my point. You are the owner, you're responsible for taking care of this. Unfortunate, it's, it's unfortunate for whoever's leasing it now. Completely understand. Mr. Rodriguez?
I know, it's, it's horrible. No, no, it is, it is, it is, I've, I've known people that leased the place and because of the owner's mishap, got evicted because they repoed it, the, the place. I mean, it, it, things like that happen. My question is, is there a motion?
I, I agree with you, because it's both staff and, and commission.
Could we, consideration, allow on thirty days to bring it up to code and let our staff just give him a? She what?
So, at this point, to make it, there's no way of fixing this. There, it, it's not compliant, number one, it's, where we, where do we go from here to make them compliant?
Can I have a word? Can we have thirty days? And him, but for us, go in and give us a list of what we need to fix and we will fix it.
Well, you, you would have to come here to get that list.
Whoever's gonna give you a list.
That would be up to them, up to their, what their standards are or their rules are. But what's the issue here, Joe, I'm, I'm sorry, the issue here is that they're operating illegally, the zoning needs to be changed.
And there's more than that, because, because now they're talking about environmental impacts, because their oil is there on the ground.
Right.
Uh, they have to have a solid, uh, foundation to be able to work on the cars, plus have a, a, uh, a structure to be able to work in. So, then, and then plus that, you have the required ventilation, whatever it is for the chemicals that they may have. So, it's not just, it's not a thirty-day, I don't think it's a thirty-day fix. Am I correct? I, I don't know.
Just by the simple fact of creating a building so that they can have an, uh, operations inside a building, it's gonna take more than thirty days.
Okay, but this list, I have been asking him since we started this. And he says that he's gonna go and tell me what we need. I don't have any list, I don't have anything. And what I heard that we need to fix, it's been fixed, like the sewer and everything, that's been fixed. But we don't have a, a real list where I can say, I, I need this. And we're, we're trying to do the things right, because that place has been open for two years and they didn't have any permit. And so, they got fined and they didn't pay, they, she actually just, um, what do you call it?
Removed it at least?
And then she took over and she wants to do the things right, that's why we're here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying. It's given the benefit of the doubt, thirty days, no more nor less, bring it up to code, get your permit so that you can work, meanwhile, you fix these. If within thirty days' time, you can't comply, then we shut them down.
But I think the issue is that you can't issue permits in thirty days.
The first thing they need to do is they need to stop operations until the conditional use permit is approved. The next thing is they need to start, uh, preparing the property for those type of operations. Um, and they need to remediate the soil that has been contaminated.
They, they have to have a soil study from the Texas Department of Environmental Quality and all these things to be able to?
And they have to have the containers over drums, so, under drums.
Receptacles, yes. Joe, can I, can I ask, could they deny the permit, is there a time requirement, is there a minimum, um, a minimum time that they have to wait?
If they deny the permit today, they're gonna have to wait another year before they can reapply. That will be enough time for them to put all the provisions that they need.
But their operation stays on hold or, or?
They need to cease and desist.
Is that, I, I think the, the reason and part of the confusion here is that there's been a practice where you have a landlord that leases property and makes assumptions that you can operate at will. So, here's a case where in the past, the city, uh, code enforcers have cited and regardless of the owner, it's the land that we're citing for, in, you know, for inoperable use. There's been no permits that have been issued, and so the, the bottom line here is that regardless of hearsay, regardless of any promises, is that there's a violation of law here. And so, what's before you is to deny the continuous, you know, request for this zoning change.
Mr. Perez?
So, then even, let's, working on a hypothetical, let's say that we do give that a thirty-day extension. Then all operations of, of any of the business have to cease. So, there would be no mechanic shop, there would be nothing going on. And in that meantime, there would be activities to remediate or, and to prepare the, the site to be able to house. And in that meantime, there would be activities to remediate or, and to prepare the, the site to be able to house a mechanic shop. And so we could at that point see where they're at.
Well, there's, there's two mechanisms. Is that, one, you, as I understand it, from a, from a legal perspective, is that you can deny.
Okay, yeah.
They can go to the BOA and ask for a zoning change. So they, they would say that we took it to council, they may go to the BOA and ask for it to be reversed. So from there, if the BOA comes back and says, yes, we, we agree, but again, we'll be presenting the same information here. So there's another option where you can delete the item and so they would have still come back and get a permit. But the, the bottom line is that they're non-compliant in accordance to the law, whether you give an extension, they are still not in compliance.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Okay, so let me, just, just to clarify, if we deny, that means they have to wait a year. What if we say?
Or we could delete the...
We can delete or postpone it. They will still have to cease and desist the, the, the work. And that'll give them, maybe they can fix it in two or three, maybe four months. And then come back and say, hey, instead of just straight up deleting it, I mean, denying it and make them wait a year. What if they can be able to, to fix everything in three months or four months? Instead of the whole year. Is that something that we might consider?
Ms. Eloyes? It's a business, why isn't it registered?
Oh yeah, we thought we had to have the permit first and then go and register the business.
But you never went for the permit?
Well, I'm sorry, the, the thing that we're asking for, the... Yeah.
So I'm gonna have Mr. Terrazas explain is that the land use is one component, the permitting, and the registration of the business is, is also separate.
So whatever you guys wanna do, I, I would just say, can I give up time?
I, I honestly wanna ask you, listen what the, did you read what they want you to do? It's a lot of money. It is a lot of money, okay? Your business is not registered, okay? There appears to be mechanical activity on site. Septic tank was the, which you've heard, you say it, it was, it was done. The tank was covered, but no information regarding the old tank installation, et cetera. Parking lot is not solid surface, okay? And um, and, and, and on top of it, you're gonna need a building. You're renting this place.
No, she owns the place.
Okay. Oh, you're just representing her?
Yes.
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry, I thought you were the mechanic. Uh, I mean, uh, the owner of the mechanic shop, okay, um... That's a lot of money.
Yeah, you know, well, we just need a list where it says what we need to fix.
So...
And I've been asking for this, this, this is the first time, I'm thinking, I asked them in front of the guys, I told them, take, take real list. He told me, he said, take it, take it to the next day.
So the process, when somebody's gonna open a mechanic shop in the city of Socorro, the first thing they need to do is get a conditional use permit. That's the very first thing. Once the conditional use permit is approved, then they start making plans, submit plans to see how the shop is gonna look. And our building inspectors will review the plans. Um, if it's already, if they already have the shop required, we go to the site. The fire marshal goes to the site and inspects the actual area where they're gonna be working. That hasn't happened. Um, after that, if the area where they're gonna be working complies with all of the building codes, then we issue a business registration, saying that everything is in compliance and they can start operating. In this particular property, they started for, they started operating and then they started making arrangements to get the conditional use permit.
So...
Mr. Perez?
Mr. Terrazas, let me do this. I'm gonna rescind my motion, okay? How, how they pay for it, if they willing to pay front the mon- put up the money, that's on them. That's, that's their property. Where I have a concern is the thirty days and I think that's where, it's probably gonna, it's gonna take longer than that. Just for the simple reason that there's a lot of components that need to be addressed. And so at this point, I'll rescind my motion and I'll leave it in your hands to see how you want to approach it.
Mr. Nevadas?
It just amazes me how we're nitpicking on a business proposal that wants to do things right. But yet again, we wanna approve or continue to approve crap on Alameda, junkyards, tire shops. Give them a chance.
Ms. Eloyes?
At this time, I would like to make a motion to delete the item with the condition that staff go out there, let them know, give them a list, a laundry list of what they need to do. Make sure that they stop all.
Yes.
Because you did it wrong, but give them the opportunity, give them a list of what they need to do so that they can start doing it. I feel that it's, it's, it's something that um, they came up trying to do the right thing, I guess. So let's, let's try, like Mr. Nevadas says, is, let's try to help them out um, so that they can open up their, their business. And that's my motion.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't know. Ms. Eloyes? I didn't know he was gonna make a motion. What I was gonna ask, is there any other business they can, that's not as costly, that can be?
They, with the zoning of the property, they can do anything that falls under commercial, that um, they can have a building that's less than, no, I'm sorry, greater than three thousand square feet, pretty much anything under commercial. The only thing that requires a conditional use permit is a mechanic shop or a junkyard. They can put a retail store, a gas station, um, anything under commercial.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Your motion.
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion is to delete.
And give staff the ability to go out there, make sure that they stop all work and then give them the la- laundry list of what they need to fix. So they can be up to code, then come back and get all the documents and, and permits and stuff.
Come in, okay.
Oh, no, no, we're deleting it, so it's, it's, it's something, oh, six months. Six months is good, I, I believe.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, discussion and action on plat approval for Burr Bridge Acres repla J, being a repla of Lot Seven, Block Three, Burr Bridge Acres located at twelve, two ninety-five, Nicoli Drive.
That's good, that's good. I, I would just say...
This request is a minor plat. Uh, the owner of this property wants to subdivide it to give a small amount of land to each one of his children. Uh, in your backup, you're gonna see there's a, the proposed minor plat. They just wanna subdivide it into four equal tracts of land. He is a truck driver. He said that this mobile home that's on the site right now, he's gonna relocate it so that it, it can align within the setbacks. This property is inside the Socorro's ETJ, it's outside the Socor- the city limit.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colomía López?
Yes. Item number twenty-six, discussion and action on plat approval for Mission Trail Estates repla King, being a repla of Lot Two, Block Seven, Mission Trail Estates located at two eleven and two thirteen, Camino de la Rosa.
This uh, request, they're doing a lot split. It's already a... It's also outside the city limit inside Socorro's ETJ. This one, they wanna split the property in half. Right now, the way it is, it's subdivided by meets and bounds, but they wanna officialize the plat.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colomía López?
Yes. Item number twenty-seven, discussion and action on the final plat approval for Sunset Valley Estates, Units One, being all of Trax One C, One C One, Two E, and a portion of Trax One A, One B, One D, Two A, and Two C, Block Ten, and all of Trax Seven B One, and a portion of Trax Five A and Six A, Block Eleven, Socorro Grant.
This is a final plat approval for Sunset Valley subdivision. Uh, we had a meeting with the engineers and Danenbaum and we reviewed all the comments that were provided to them and they complied with everything. The final plat matches the preliminary plat. In addition to this, the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending that they um, include a rock wall. On this little area right here, there's gonna be a, a park. So the recommendation from the commission was that they include a rock wall that matches the... I apologize, we're having technical difficulties here.
I know, you are.
So this rock wall here, this is uh, in the fire department, they're gonna continue the same design with rock wall and wrought iron. They're gonna continue from here along the edge of the park. This is gonna be a future par- uh, park. And the engineer also agreed to uh, provide a rock wall around the pounding area. You should have a copy of the proposed subdivision in your backup. Uh, the lots that you see highlighted are gonna be duplex homes. That's the way it was approved in the preliminary plat. There's gonna be a total of twenty-eight lots with duplexes. And this is uh, Unit One of a future development.
Ms. Eloyes? This is all to be sold, right? Correct?
Yes, ma'am. They're gonna sell it to builders, right?
Yes, it's, it's already uh, being developed for carefree homes. Carefree homes will be a pounding builder in that subdivision.
My question is, did we get some uh, acquire some furniture from the...
Yes.
Okay, that's us. Okay. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening. Ooh, it's getting late. Um, I, I just uh, wanna point out that that park is gonna be a Long North Loop. One of the concerns from the Planning and Zoning Commission was that it was gonna be a Long North Loop. Even though there's gonna be a rock wall with that fencing on the side, kids will be kids, there will be balls, there will be kites, there will be toys that'll be potentially crossing the street. They will go and try to retrieve that football, that soccer ball, going across North Loop. Not only that, but it's a very busy street. Not only that, but those are a lot of homes for a lot of traffic going into North Loop. Um, not only that, but also what was discussed during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was uh, the other subdivisions that have already been approved across the street and down the street, across the street, something like that. Um, Mr. Terrazas could tell you more. Um, but all the subdivisions that are either coming or have already been approved in that area. It's a lot of traffic. I don't, I understand that the uh, designer said that the park will be nice entrance to, to the subdivision. I see it more as of a safety issue. Um, those are a lot of fast cars going down that street. And so, and pro- potentially turning right into that area. You're gonna be coming off a high-speed street, turning into what's right front of the park.
Ms. Cruz, your time is up.
Thank you.
Ms. Eloyes? Oh, go ahead, go ahead, you first.
No, I, I was just gonna mention, uh, just to address your concerns, uh, Techstart is requesting to lower the speed limit on North Loop. So we're gonna present a, an ordinance next month to reduce the speed limit on North Loop. Also, uh, for the park, to address the concerns of the kids, that's why they're gonna put a rock wall with wrought iron. So it doesn't interfere with visibility for the traffic that's gonna be coming out of that subdivision. I'm sorry? Uh, they're gonna reduce it to forty-five miles per hour, from fifty-five to forty-five.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So just to answer some questions real quick, uh, Marty Boyd from Techstart also said that every time they put a park, um, whether we like it or not, you know, that's what it is, um, they will look at reducing speeds. We have a park, we can say the same thing that, uh, about our concern on our park in, in Socorro Road. You can also see the one in Championship Bulldog where it's right next to a road. And we hadn't had any issues, we haven't had any children get run over. Thank God, you know, it just doesn't say it won't happen, but you know, that's why we take all the precaution uh, that Techstart provides on their corridors. Um, I understand that it's a park, uh, but we're doing the best we can.
Ms. Eloyes? I have two questions, or I might, it might be a comment, but it's gonna look very much like Emerald Park, is that, is that correct? When you drive into Emerald Park and the, the park's right there, you, you drive, yeah, you're down, you're going up Eastlake and then you turn on Emerald Park and then the park's right there immediately?
I would say there's similarity, but...
Not as big, but, right, okay. I, I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm with her concern, but unfortunately, this was approved already a long time ago, right? We're just here for the final and there's nothing else we can do about this.
Yes.
No, I, I completely understand, I understand, but, Miriam, just so you know, this, this was approved prior to November of two thousand and sixteen.
I mean, just to add, I mean, the, the, the planning and zoning, if you said match the wall that is right in front of the fire department. I went and measured it, that was only a five-foot wall, I'm proposing a six-foot wall, just to be on the same side.
All right. Thank you.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colomía López?
Yes. Item number twenty-nine, discussion and action to direct the city manager and/or staff to assess the feasibility of the realignment of North Nevadas Road and right-of-way acquisition necessary for the roadway.
If you will permit me some time to get the uh, the exhibits so that the public can also understand what we're talking about. So I guess as we wait, if I can give you some background is that, um, when we take a look at the existing condition is that, um, there's North and South Nevadas Street that abuts Alameda, which is, as you know, a, a state facility. There's also some development that's occurring in the area. There is an opportunity to meet with the developer to engage in the possibility of realigning the property, meaning the, the roadway. So we're gonna have exhibits to that illustrate the possibility of that realignment and show you that there is a essentially locally preferred alternative. And the, the, the purpose of coming before the body is to ask for direction for us to look at the visibility of acquiring the properties.
So then you could potentially have the, the streetlights serve on both sides?
Yes, sir. So, so essentially, the existing condition right now...
Yeah.
Um, is that there is a signalized intersection on only one portion of Nevada's Road. The other one is a stop condition. The proposal here, and we had several alternatives that we worked with the developer. Ultimately, there was one, which is one that you see up there, that has less impact to the development. So by us coming here and possibly looking at acquisition of the properties, we would realign Nevada's. I have, uh, talked to Tech Dot, um, and to try and understand what the process is. So part of the process is that we would send information to them, to their access management team. And part of the recommendations, we'll hear once we submit that information. But my understanding of this is that, once we realign it and if it's a possibility to acquire the property, is that this would be a, a totally controlled intersection, so it's a four-stop with signalization.
And just to add to that, um, could you tell them that, uh, we would have to help them try to change their, their buildings?
Right. So, so part of the, our, our discussions with the developer, and if you can follow me through the map, is that there's a realignment, or what we call the S curve. So what you see in yellow on the far left-hand corner is realigning the roadway. So what you see in green is that he would move those properties that are being proposed to be built within the same property. So he would dedicate some of the, the property so that we have the capability to realign. We still need to acquire potentially other property to ensure that there's safe mechanisms so that the roadway could be realigned.
So...
Mr. Rodriguez?
So in talking with the developer when he came here, I had told him about that, that concern, is that what would it, what would happen if we wanted to realign? Because at this point, he, he was just gonna build it. And, uh, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the commissioners asked, hey, well, what, what can we do to try to see? So when I took the opportunity to talk to him, he was very receptive, but he said the same thing. In lieu of you taking a couple of my buildings, could you put them at the far end? And I'll give you the progress. And that's where we're, we're, we're at this, at this time, i- 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 where it's, it's for the city's benefit to realign it so that we won't have, uh, the people in Nevada's, North Nevada's, trying to struggle because it's very difficult to get out of there when you're trying to make a left. Um, because if you notice on that building, their, their cars are parked right in front. So it's very di, in other words, you would have to move your, the hood of the truck should be almost at the street so that you can look. It, it's very dangerous. So this is something that, uh, that, uh, i- i- in lieu of he will give us, uh, that, that, that property, um, I think it's great, you know? So this is something to consider.
So what we're here, it's for this little yellow brick road, right?
Yes. Right. So i- in any configuration, I, I mean, we're calling the exhibits as they are, but it's an S curve realignment. And so we looked at different scenarios. We shared the information with the developer and, and of course, he preferred one that would have minimum impact to his development. As mentioned earlier, this development is funded through the state. So of course, he would have to go back and have an explanation of why there's such, uh, delay in, in, uh, moving forward. So we felt that by having the option A, that would have minimal impact, would still achieve the same thing for the city.
I love it.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
And only because sometimes you do things, what's the phrase? The, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And so, uh, although the S curve will straighten, will minimize, or actually minimize the, the danger and all that stuff that, that we are talking about, will there be an issue with accessibility with those individuals that are on skylight circle? Right there at the corner of, of Nevada's and, and skylight?
Right. So, so part of the, the, the visibility that we would do is what to do with that area. So it could be vacated by the city. Um, there could be other opportunities. At this point, I really can't give you an educated, you know, opinion of what we really should be doing. But one thing that I will tell you is that with the signalization of, of the four corners, the signalization component, is that that's something that we'll talk to Tech Dot in terms of who's gonna absorb the cost to signalize it.
Because my, my thing would be, well, if, that the individuals would go to the, the second, uh, skylight entrance and just come around to their, to their property.
Right. Well, part of the, the, my understanding and what I asked Tech Dot is that if there's a requirement to do a traffic study. Normally, Tech Dot would say yes, but because there's already existing access and you're just shifting it, it's not required. Now certainly internally, we can look at an option to see how traffic will flow.
I'm just saying because I, you know, you're, you have a, it's a small, it's an older neighborhood and some people maybe said ways that, that wanting to change. So that, that's just, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Well, I, I think that as we move forward, those are gonna be things that we'll have to address with the public and bring those recommendations to you all.
All right.
And you will require a time of transition?
Yes, and that's why we're here.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. And we have a speaker, Miriam Cruz?
Um, I just wanna take the opportunity to praise Mr. Medina for bringing, um, good ideas to the city and continuing to bring good ideas and good solutions. That's it.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombría López?
Yes. Item number thirty-one, discussion on action to approve or deny a memorandum of understanding and agreement with Centro San Vicente and to authorize city manager or her designee to execute agreement.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mayor and Council, uh, Centro San Vicente received a grant that's going to provide in collaboration with the Ciudad Socorro, uh, offering hepatitis C education screening and linkage to care services, targeting the residents of Socorro. What they're asking is for us to provide them a space and they would pay three hundred and fifty dollars a month for the space. They will hire their own community health worker and they will spend about five thousand dollars in marketing a year. Right? For now, the MOU will stand for one year and then depending on the funding, it'll either extend or at that point it'll end. But I think this is a great opportunity to offer services and we do have space in our Real Vista Center that we can accommodate them.
That's great. Okay.
Awesome. Mayor, we have a speaker, Miriam Cruz?
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombría López?
Yes.
Mayor, there, there are two items listed in the executive session items, but we don't need to go to the executive session.
Motion to adjourn?
No. Motion to delete, item number thirty-four, thirty-five?
Second.
Thirty-six?
Yes.
And we have a speaker for those items. Uh, Miriam Cruz? Thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six.
For which one?
Thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombría López?
Yes. Item number thirty-seven, discussion on action regarding the application to change rates filed on March nineteen, two thousand and eighteen, by El Paso Electric regarding community solar program.
Council, I would ask you, I would suggest that council, uh, to deny the application. Secret history is long and complicated. If you thought there was gonna be a settlement, there was no settlement. The action, you only had to hear it before the state administrative judge on Tuesday. So it's already done. The P, the PUC will have a decision probably in April. Um, and the city will pass it. We've kept us waiting this, we're waiting for the city to pass the act. Well, things never did. It's on their, it will be on their agenda for Tuesday if they're gonna be decisive.
So motion to deny the application?
Second.
Second.
And we have a speaker for this item, Miriam Cruz?
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombría López?
Yes. Item number thirty-eight, discussion on action regarding personnel matters involving municipal courts.
Mayor, we're not quite ready for this one. We would, we would ask the council to postpone it. We should have it next time.
Motion to postpone till next meeting?
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombría López?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, motion to adjourn?
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombría López?
Yes.